Good, so that's great and I know the school's doing everything they can in their power to keep our kids in school five days a week. But I know there's other communities in Maine that have already had to pull kids out and quarantining. So I guess I look at it as it's our job as a full community to put our arms around our kids and these families that are, you know, it's challenging when your kid is all of a sudden pulled out for a two-week quarantine and you're trying to work full-time and potentially an essential worker and trying to find childcare. So I just, I urge those that haven't made the decision or haven't had the opportunity to get their vaccine to please do so. Our kids are not in a position to get vaccines at this point. So again, just kind of looking to all of us as a community to wrap our arms around these kids and keep them in school, in the classroom, with their peers, with their teachers, full-time as long as we can until we can have a vaccine for these kids. So that's all I had.
Thank you.
And drive slow.
All right, now manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna ask our two chiefs to come forward. First will be Chief Rumsey, our police chief, and Chief, if you wouldn't mind, we'd like to basically recognize some of the promotions we've had in the department and we're really excited. We've got a big crowd tonight, too. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Shane, Mr. Chair and counselors. Nice to see you all. And I echo your sentiments about driving slowly through the school zones. Just so you know, a number of the members of the PD are here. We all agree with you and we'll be out there keeping an eye out also. So we're here tonight to swear in a few employees. And so what brings us here, a short little backstory, is that earlier this year, Captain Dave Young, who served with us very honorably for a number of years, decided that he was gonna transition out of law enforcement and actually luckily we didn't lose him as a town. He works for Department of Public Works and we get to see him go by in the big trucks every now and then and smile and wave. But his leaving the police department left us with an opening at the, in the leadership team and also an opening in the police department for a new employee. We were very lucky that we were able to hire an employee named Amy Owen to fill that vacancy. And Amy, if you would mind coming up, please. And Tammy, do you want Amy standing over in the hot seat over here? Go ahead, right over here, Amy. So just a little bit about Amy, who we're gonna swear in tonight and then I'll pin Amy's badge. Amy came and actually started working with us on August 1st. She comes to us as a veteran, having about 10 years of experience with both Portland Police Departments and with Yarmouth Police Departments. She also has, this is really pretty cool, extensive experience as an educator and has taught children all around the world. She said just call it Southeast Asia and South America, but I'm actually gonna list the countries because I think they're pretty incredible. She's taught children not only in Colorado, but New Zealand, Nicaragua, Guatemala, Nepal, Cambodia and Thailand. So her passion is to help educate and care for our community's youth, which is super exciting to me. And it makes it very, very special that we've asked Amy to step in as acting SRO at the school for this fall and she was welcomed with open arms by the school administration. So we're very lucky and very happy to have Amy with us. And Tammy, if you wouldn't mind administering the oath of office and then I'll go ahead and pin her badge.
And point the microphone at Tammy. She's a soft talker.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Amy Owen.
I, Amy Owen.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
In this state.
In this state.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
So long as, so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent on me.
The duties incumbent on me.
As a Cumberland police officer.
As a Cumberland police officer.
According to said constitutions.
According to said constitutions.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the charter and ordinances of this town.
And the charter and ordinances of this town.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very natural, Chief.
Get my mic back. So with Captain Young's departure, it left us with, like I mentioned, a spot on the leadership team. We're also faced with one of our sergeants being out on long-term leave. So we came up with a plan to promote two sergeants, one a permanent sergeant and one an acting sergeant in Sergeant Burgess's absence. And so we've promoted these two sergeants, so we have a total of three working now, rotating them through in about six months' distance into the administrative wing of the police department to work with me, which is a huge help to me, helps them learn a little bit about my job and groom leadership, future leadership of the police department from the inside, which we're very excited about. We just kicked that off in early August with those promotions. So first I'd like to call up Sergeant Scott Hendy. Scott, if you wanna come on up. Sergeant Scott Hendy was promoted on August 1st. Scott is also a 10-year veteran of law enforcement with time at Bitterford PD and over five years here with Cumberland. Scott is a drug recognition expert, which means that he's recognized as an expert for court testimony purposes in impaired driving cases. He also helps instruct our staff in the proper administration of field sobriety tests for the detection of impaired drivers and he helps maintain our fleet of vehicles. So we're very lucky to have Scott and Scott is our, the oldest of our new patrol sergeants. So Tammy, if you wanna do the honors with Scott and then his girlfriend Sophia Switek is gonna come up and pin his badge. Sophie, you can.
Hi Scott. Raise your right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Scott Hendy.
I, Scott Hendy.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitutions.
Of this state.
Of this state.
In the United States.
In the United States.
So long as I shall continue.
So long as I shall continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent on me.
The duties incumbent on me.
As a sergeant of the Cumberland Police Department.
As a sergeant of the Cumberland Police Department.
According to said constitutions.
According to said constitutions.
And the charter and ordinances of this town.
And the charter and ordinances of this town.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
While Sophia is pinning the badge, I'll just let you know that Sophia is also a police officer and just started today with the Yarmouth Police Department. Congratulations. And then lastly Sergeant Jake Luchance. Jake, if you're around the corner and wanna come around. Jake was promoted to acting sergeant on August 2nd. Jake has over six years of law enforcement experience, including time with South Portland and then a little over three years here with us in the town of Cumberland. He's an academy certified instructor that helps teach academy cadets as well as our own staff the proper techniques for arrest, restraint and control. Jake is also in charge of managing our field training program for new police officers. And just like with Scott and with Amy, we're very lucky to have him on the team and proud to have him in this new position. And pinning his sergeant's badge is gonna be his father Dean. Go right ahead and do, oh, I'm sorry Tammy, you wanna do the swearing first?
Please raise your red hand. I, Jacob Luchance.
I, Jacob Luchance.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
In the United States.
In the United States.
So long as I shall continue.
So long as I shall continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent on me.
The duties incumbent on me.
As a sergeant for the Cumberland Police Department.
As a sergeant of the Cumberland Police Department.
According to said constitutions.
According to said constitutions.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the charter and ordinances of this town.
And the charter and ordinances of this town.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Now I'd like to invite Chief Dan Small to the podium. Chief?
Thanks, boss. We have four people being sworn in tonight. The first one is a new deputy chief, Eric Boyer. Eric, if you can come forward. Eric started in public safety in 2005. Initially started as in the fire science program out to SMCC and after the first year quickly realized that paramedicine was really the direction that was the predominance in our service. So he transferred over to that and did obtain that degree. He was also a living student in SOCO while he was doing that, which is the same as what our living program is here in Cumberland. Once he received the degree, his first job was in Augusta, working for the department there. And then transferred down to, and I think it was in '09, down to Bitterford. He started doing pre-DM shifts here in 2019 and realized that this is a really great community working versus the status of the work in Bitterford. Just a different climate, if you will. So he's been here for a few years and was promoted to deputy chief. He's a full-time employee, but he did take the position of Chris Cobb. Chris got promoted to deputy chief in South Portland, so he didn't have enough time to go between both roles. Eric has stepped up and has been doing a fabulous job, both with our call company and the full-time certainly as well as the pre-DM staff as well. Tonight, well, he's gonna be pursuing his bachelor degree in leadership. He's also been certified in the last year, pro boy certified as an officer. And if I can have his wife Brittany and his daughter Natalie come up after Tammy swears him in, they'll put the pins on you, the badge on you. Changed their mind.
No way. I'm not coming up.
Hi Eric. You raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Eric Boyer.
I, Eric Boyer.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
In this state.
In this state.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I shall continue.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Duties incumbent on me.
The duties incumbent on me.
As deputy fire chief for the town of Cumberland.
As deputy fire chief for the town of Cumberland.
According to said constitutions.
According to said constitutions.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the charter and ordinances of this town.
The charter and ordinances of this town.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
The next person is Nick Brown. Nick's been with the department since 2006. He actually started as a college student here in the fire science program. Graduated from that program and he's actually a full-time firefighter in the SOCO fire department. And is a few months away from obtaining his paramedic license. He also does pre-DM shifts in Scarborough. We're excited once he gets his paramedic license. And he'll do even more shifts that we have here in the town of Cumberland. But he's focused in exactly where he needs to be, obtaining that paramedic degree, which is not an easy thing for him to achieve.
Dan, get closer to the mic. We can't hear you at home.
Tammy took it. He's full-time in SOCO. He does pre-DM shifts here and he's doing a fabulous job getting his paramedic license coming up. If I could have his father Matt, mother Joan and assistant Megan, please come forward.
Good. You raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Nick Brown.
I, Nick Brown.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
In the United States.
In the United States.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof. As, so long, so long as I shall continue.
So long as I shall continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent on me.
The duties incumbent on me.
As lieutenant of the Cumberland Fire Department.
As lieutenant of the Cumberland Fire Department.
According to said constitutions.
According to said constitutions.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the charter and ordinances of this town.
Charter and ordinances of this town.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You guys probably know her as Stephanie Weeman, but she has been Stephanie Morgan for a couple of months now. She is one of our new full-time firefighter paramedics. She works two 24-hour shifts over an eight-day cycle. This is the one you guys know the best because of the coming up through our school system. Her dad being Craig, who's been around forever as well, serving, he served up through the rank of deputy chief. After graduating from Greeley, she went right into an EMT class and then immediately proceeded into the community param, the paramedicine program at SMCC. So she has continued right through public safety. She hasn't had this, you know, what do I wanna do when I grow up thing. She has known, she went to work at Maine Medical Center in the Remus Department for a while. She is in the process of obtaining her nursing degree. But we're happy to have her, having another firefighter paramedic on the department as a full-time position is a huge value to us. And again, everybody probably, and I still have to get used to it, not calling her Stephanie Weeman, but she is now Stephanie Morgan and I'd like to have Matt come up to present the badge to her.
Raise your right hand, please. I, Stephanie Morgan.
I, Stephanie Morgan.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
In the United States.
In the United States.
So long as I shall continue.
So long as I shall continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent on me.
The duties incumbent on me.
As a Cumberland firefighter paramedic.
As a Cumberland firefighter paramedic.
According to said constitutions.
According to said constitutions.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the charter and ordinances of this town.
And the charter and ordinances of this town.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, the last one that we have tonight, certainly not the least, is Richard Doff. I can have him come forward with his life partner Heather. He actually will start this coming Monday doing our drill school, if you will. But he certainly has a ton of talent. He started in Ohio, actually in 2006 and immediately going from his EMT basic license in firefighter one and two, he went into obtaining his paramedic license as well. Moved around a little bit into, in South Carolina. He wanted to get into a little bit of warmer weather and then because of personal reasons, decided to make the move to the state of Maine. He's worked in a couple of different departments, but most recently coming from the Auburn Fire Department. Again, us being able to bring on another paramedic that has got some good experience certainly helps. We have two people on duty at any one time. So having that strength of the ones that we have now is just a huge level of service that he's going to be giving us to the department. So with that, if we can be sworn in and again have his life partner Heather come on up. And you can lose your mask.
Hi, Richard. Raise your right hand, please. I, Richard Doff.
I, Richard Doff.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution. Of this state.
Of this state.
In the United States. So long as I shall continue. A citizen thereof. That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
The duties incumbent on me. As a Cumberland firefighter paramedic. According to said constitutions.
According to said constitutions.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the charter and ordinances of this town.
And the charter and ordinances of this town.
Congratulations.
There's a lot of firefighters here tonight, which always is a very proud thing for me to be a part of. Deb has got chocolate cupcakes and apples back at the station. So all the firefighters and we'll even invite the police department if they wanna come up as well. So thank you guys for the opportunity.
Thanks, Chief.
Dan? Folks, before you all leave, I wanted to thank all of those who were in attendance for the passing of Phil Chase at his visiting hours and his funeral. It was really gratifying to see you in attendance there and holding guard for him in his honor and I wanted to express my appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you. It was proud, gentleman at 94 years old, that's been in the town of Cumberland since he was a year old and started our dispatch service when he was chief, to all the things that he's done. It was proud for us to be a part of that, to give him a good sentence.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
So that's gonna, that's gonna be a very tough act to follow, but do have one more item for you tonight under manager's report. We posted this online. It's basically a request from the Bruce Hill area, Pleasant Valley area neighborhood for concerns they have about their current water situation. And I'm talking about their well situation. Back in 2009, we identified this area as one of the critical areas to eventually expand infrastructure out to, to help with the well situation out there. I won't get into what the yields are. You're gonna hear a presentation from a few of the neighbors. But it's a pretty significant area. We've had this in our capital improvement plan for some time. We haven't gotten to a place where we could fund it because of the cost. We're talking well over 19,000 feet of water mains and at a cost of close to $4 million. It was a very difficult project to take a look at. They'll basically discuss tonight their concerns and where they are in the process and what they, you know, what their request from you would be. I think honestly, there is some real concern from the neighbors that you should hear. And I think this warrants at least the finance committee to take a harder look at this and maybe report back to the council and maybe a workshop with the neighbors in the future just to talk about next steps, how to move forward, what the challenges are in front of us. As you know, there are a lot of big capital projects on our horizon and we have to balance all those needs in the community as well. So Barry Schiff is here to kick this off for the neighbors. And Barry, if you wouldn't mind, come on up.
Thanks, Bill, and good evening. And it's not lost on me that today is 20 years and two days. And so I wanna express my appreciation for the members of the fire department and the police department in Cumberland and thank them and Chief Rumsey and Chief Small. So good evening. In the interest of time, I have some prepared remarks and just a few slides, I promise. I know that you have a full agenda and I'll try and keep on task. It's something sometimes I need my wife to help me do, but she's not going to. So this first graphic that I have is really just our neighborhood. And the red dot in the center is where I live. This is the Bruce Hill neighborhood. It's tax map RO8. And again, my name is Barry Schiff. I live at 254 Bruce Hill Road. I'm gonna lead off, but I know some of my neighbors are here and are ready to speak. I also know you have a full agenda, so we'll try and be crisp. So my wife and I and three sons have lived in town since 2007, the fall. And before buying our house, like anyone does, you sort of do your due diligence. And we tested our water and we tested for water quality and quantity. And on the quantity side, our well is 400 feet deep. It's like many people that live in town have deep wells. But interestingly, we have a half a gallon a minute recharge. So I want you to picture a five-gallon bucket. Takes you 10 minutes to fill that bucket of water up. So, but we thought we could live with it. Prior owners, the Monroes, had lived there a long time and raised a family and they didn't have any problems. But on the quality side, when we tested our water, we had sediment, which a lot of people have. We had sodium, but more concerning, we had radon and hard water. And with all those, we said, okay, we'll treat it, right? That's what you do. You treat your water in your house. And in the summer of 2008, we quickly learned what a half a gallon a minute looks like in our first summer. We were power washing to stay in our house. Our well went dry and for four days we trucked into town and used the spigot out in front of the old historical society. And it worked great, but it was tiring and felt a little weird, given our move to this great community. Since then, we've replaced all of our appliances with low water demand. We've done the necessary and costly repairs and maintenance to our filtration systems and our bubble up for radon. And, you know, we've done everything that we felt like we needed to do. I want you to know, we don't have a lawn, so we don't water that. You know, we have a natural lawn. We have three boys that destroy anything anyways. So it didn't feel like a nice grassy lawn, but it made sense for us. But we don't wash our cars. This Sunday, we'll be at the Greeley Soccer Girls fundraiser and we'll have our cars washed there. But we can't do our laundry. We can't do our dishes at the same time that we wanna take a shower. It's impossible. We can't do that. So set aside what would happen in case of a fire. But even with that cautious approach, we seem to run it dry every year. It's been less of a problem in the last couple of years, but we run it dry. Ran it dry a couple of weeks ago. I pressure washed my deck. It took me two hours to do that and we had no water for the remainder of the day. You can imagine what that's like. But in March of this year, we did, we regularly test our water. And in March of this year, we tested and we found that we had uranium levels that were excessively high. And for those of you that are, you know, uranium causes cancer. It affects your kidneys. And we thought, huh, that's probably not a good thing for us. So we installed a $2,300 reverse osmosis system so that when we turn our faucet on at the sink, we can have water and our ice maker in the fridge and the freezer can make water and we can drink it. Safe drinking water seems like a reasonable thing. But it kinda made me think about how crazy it is, living this incredible community and a great neighborhood. And was I the only person that had this problem, you know? So I reached out to the neighborhood. In June, I dropped 120 letters into my neighbors' mailboxes just to try to understand the scope of the problem. And on July 6th, 25 of my neighbors, and you might like think 25, that's not that many. It was a beautiful July night. People aren't interested in going anywhere, let alone coming to my house to talk about water. So 25 of our neighbors showed up and I So 25 of our neighbors showed up, and I figured, who's going to complain about water? That's, you know, but the room's full tonight, and I think a lot of these people are here, not only for the bike pet issues, but to talk about water. And at that meeting, we agreed, at that meeting on July 6th, we agreed that we would try to gather some more data. So this is again, this is an aerial photo. I've reoriented it a little bit, sort of clockwise orientation, Bruce Hill, Pleasant Valley and Valley. This is the general loop of the neighborhood to make it easier to show some of the data. So, this is the same aerial of our neighborhood. The red dots, I'll show you, the red dot with the yellow outline is my house. I wanted to make sure that, you know, to keep the context of it. For clarity, the red dots indicate we compiled everybody's data that was willing to share it with us. Each red dot indicates a problem at one of my neighbor's houses. It's either arsenic, uranium, radon, sediment, sodium, hard water, bacteria, E. coli, coliform, and in some cases, lack of water. It's prevalent through our neighborhood. It's not an isolated issue. It's not isolated to me. On July 21st, a smaller group of us, myself, Heidi Lasage, Donna Walter, John Falau, and Jen McAdoo, met with town manager Bill Shane. He was gracious enough to give us his time, and we had a really good dialogue and sort of discuss strategy. What do we do? You know, we have this problem in this neighborhood. And on August 16th, we met again with a collective of people at my house outside and sort of talked about it, and we were joined again by Bill, who was gracious enough to tell us a little bit more about the process and what it looks like. So, you know, there are roughly 150 homes in our neighborhood. Our well water's poor, without treatment systems. We don't have safe drinking water, something that we all think is kind of a good thing in a community, to have safe drinking water. The water quantity recharge issues on Bruce Hill make it difficult for, as I said, many of us to shower and do our laundry at the same time, without a fear of running our wells dry. And it shouldn't be lost. We just had the Fire Department here. We don't have dry hydrants in our neighborhood. We don't have ponds in our neighborhood. We don't have, you know, a stream that the Fire Department can utilize. Tanker trucks, that's the only fire suppression that we have in our neighborhood, the only fire protection. Chapter five of the town's comprehensive plan, as Bill said, talks about, and this dates to 2009, and it was adopted in 2014, lists a specific goal around expansion of public water, and actually has an action. There's an action associated, which is great in a comprehensive plan, and that action notes Bruce Hill and Pleasant Valley Roads area for public water expansion. The town's capital improvement plan, as presented by the manager on multiple occasions in April of 2020 was the last time it was presented, identifies expansion of public water in our neighborhood as a project to be completed. Safe drinking water and fire protection is really all that we're asking for. We have a problem. We understand the town's plans, town's long-range plans have acknowledged that problem. This is not a new issue. And on behalf of my neighbors here tonight that won't speak, and those that regrettably couldn't join us, I'm asking the council for a couple of things. One is to acknowledge that we have a water problem on Bruce Hill. I'm asking you to think about that. And two is your support to address it. We can't do it alone. First is I'd like you to prioritize this project. There's a huge need for capital projects in town. We're not lost on that. It's not lost on any of us. The demand far outstrips the money that we have to spend. But the need to extend water to Bruce Hill is something that's been in the town's long-range plan for a long period now, and we really appreciate Bill offering us his time, getting us here tonight, and ask for your support in moving this forward. And there are a few of my neighbors that, just a few, that are going to speak. Thank you.
I have a question. Your name again is?
Sorry, Barry Chef.
Barry, thank you, and I do appreciate the, I'm the finance person here on the council, so I'll make sure that we talk about it, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for supporting the Greeley Soccer program too. Thank you.
It's the girls' coach too, when they do it.
Okay, thank you.
Were there any questions on the council, the gentleman?
I thought it was a great presentation.
Good evening. My name is John Falau. I'm here with my wife, Jennifer. We've been fortunate and blessed to call Cumberland our home for 33 years. We live at 205 Bruce Hill Road. Our water, like so many of our neighbors, is measurable arsenic, uranium, much, much radon, sediment, et cetera. Before we came to Cumberland, we lived in South Portland. There, we had access, just in case, to hydrants up and down the streets. The water came from, the public water came from Sebago Lake Pure, wonderful. And so this bit a bit of an adjustment for us, and we do the routine. We have the bubble up system, we do annual testing, et cetera, always hopeful, ever hopeful, that our measures will be below the thresholds that really add to the toxicity. So I come briefly before you just to say, my only request is that you give a real deep dive and take a look and explore, is this feasible, and if it is, when can it happen? My opinion is that the time has come.
Hi, I'm Heidi Lasage. I live at 59 Pleasant Valley Road. I grew up in Cumberland. The past 43 years, I've lived here. As a kid, I lived on Main Street. Then I bought my house on Pleasant Valley Road, and I've been there for 15 years. Like, the people before me, the guys before me, it's the same, you know, but my thing is I have a 13-year-old daughter, and I don't know if you guys have daughters, but let me tell you, when the water pressure is low and she's in the shower, it is miserable. There's yelling, screaming. The world is coming to an end. She's got shampoo in her hair. She can't wash it out. Like, Chris and I, we want to go to that pump station, get water, and dump it on her. I mean, it's, it's, just pick your fingernail off real slow. So, when there was the Copper Smith fire, my concern was, what would the town do if there were multiple fires? You know, would they have the adequate water supply if that house went, you know, if it moved? If the fire spread? What would we do? We were right across the street, and Taylor was super young, and that was my concern. So, I do, I feel like it is time, you know, for public water. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you for this opportunity to share our water stories with you. As you can, as you've already heard, they're not always very pretty. My name is Louise Cormier. I live at 235 Bruce Hill Road. Our story goes back 44 years, when my husband and I bought property on Bruce Hill Road to build a house. We had a well drilled, and we went down a good 267 feet. I can't recall anything about the initial water tests that could have even hinted at the issues we would have in the next four and a half decades. The water changed, something changed over time. I think there are lots of reasons for that. It became clear after almost two decades that we had a low pH level. We had corrosion of our copper pipes. We had an expensive repair, and we put in a system, and I can, I could give you the name of it, but we put in a system to deal with the low pH. We learned probably a decade, a decade and a half later, that we also had a radon problem, and we had a manganese problem, and we had calcium carbonate. The water didn't taste good. And so, of course, we put in more systems, this time a bigger, better, to deal, to replace the first one we had put in. We also added radon mitigation system. All that said, time went by, water still just didn't taste great. Even today, we had a technician over at the house to get some samples, tweak our system. We have spotting on any dishes that are washed by hand. So, that said, I don't drink this water. I don't cook with this water. Instead, my husband and I go down to the town pump on Blanchard Road to get our drinking and cooking water. That water tastes great. That's the kind of water I would like coming out of all of our faucets in our home, and that's the kind of water that I would like all of our neighbors to have. So I urge you to please, please, give this top consideration. And that said, that's my very short version of my story. And that said, I'd like to read a letter written by our neighbor who couldn't be here tonight but felt strongly that she wanted a voice, to the town council. This is from Donna Walter. I live at 234 Bruce Hill Road, Cumberland Center, and have been here for two years. The water tests we had done before closing on the house showed high levels of uranium. It definitely made us think carefully about moving forward with the purchase. The previous owner freaked out when he got the results and immediately had a mitigation system installed. I had noticed a reduction in pressure in our water system over the past few months. There was sediment in all the faucets and showerheads, then I lost water completely. I feared the well had gone dry since other neighbors, since there are other neighbors that have had to drill new wells. The pump was pulled and replaced. A large amount of sediment contributed to its demise. I currently have a water, uranium, radon mitigation system, and a hard water treatment system. A filtration system was just added when the new pump was installed. Clean, safe water should be a priority for all the residents of this town. I think it is time to make town water available to our neighborhood for health concerns as well as fire suppression concerns. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that, that, oh, there was one more, is that, okay.
Hello, my name is Holly Seddon. I live at 231 Bruce Hill Road. My husband and I moved into our house in 2006. At that time, we actually had two wells in the house, a 400-foot well and a well that's over 1,000 feet deep. We were not, we required the previous owner upon water tests to put in some sediment filters, but everything else at that time tested okay. We do have fine water pressure, but I will say, over the last 15 years, our water quality has deteriorated every single year, and we have continued to have to put in costly and expensive upgrades to our water filtration system in order to keep clean drinking water available for our two children. So I would appreciate the town council providing Bruce Hill Road with quality, safe drinking water so that all of the families who live there can have their children turn on the faucet and have a glass of water. Thank you.
That concludes the presentation, Mr. Chair, and I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Item four on our agenda this evening is public discussion. I'll read the following. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again on a new business for further council discussion. Is there anybody here this evening would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll on to legislation and policy. Item 21-089, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on a wafting out permit for 301 Forside Road, map R-2, lot 17, as recommended by the Coastal Waters Commission. And as I see, that item is tabled, so we'll move right on to 21-090. This is to hear a presentation from Mary Ann Larson and Nancy Hewitt of the Bicycle Coalition of Maine regarding bike and pedestrian safety and ways to promote more biking and walking in our community. Do we have some representatives that bring this item to forward?
My name is Mary Ann Larson, and I am a volunteer with the Bicycle Coalition of Maine, together with my friend Nancy Hewitt, and thanks so much for the opportunity to speak here tonight. The Bike Coalition has been around now for almost 30 years and has been a fierce advocate for bike and pedestrian safety throughout the state. And I want to take a moment, first of all, to thank the town of Cumberland for the work you've already done to make the community safer for bicyclists and pedestrians. I know it's gratifying to see all the people that use the sidewalks and that are taking advantage of the wide shoulders on the road to bike and so forth. So I applaud the town. I'm here to advocate for a bike rack to be placed here at the town office so that people that are able to, could ride their bikes or walk to the town office. I know you have a sign out front that asks people, could you have biked or walked here? But there isn't a rack, and I'm wondering if you would consider that happening in the future, and also moving that sign so that it's nearer to the rack. It's now on the front of the building, and I think could use some more visibility. When I sent information to Brenda, I included some information about community change grant money that's available for some of these items, and also information about a company called Duro that deals, that sells bike racks. And the prices for the racks remain the same regardless of the vendor that you use, but if you buy through the Bike Coalition, they get a donation from each rack that is purchased. So I can provide more information to Brenda and hook you up with the person at the Coalition that you would, would need to talk with. I have a handout as well for everybody on biking and walking and climate change, and you may not be aware of it, because I know I wasn't, that, I knew that the Gulf of Maine was warming faster than any other body of water in the world, but I didn't realize that Maine itself is actually warming faster than, than I think any other state in the country, which is kind of alarming. So, some information about encouraging alternative modes of transportation to cut down however much we can on the use of fossil fuels. And I think that that's all that I have to, I would also say, I am, as I think other people are going to speak about, very much in favor of the study of the rail trail proposition. I think that would be, as somebody that loves to be outdoors and, and knows that there's a great, a great hunger for the opportunity to get outside and recreate and to have active vacations, that something like that I think would be good for this whole area of Maine in terms of economic development. And I'll turn things over now to my friend Nancy, who has some other comments to make about.
Hi, my name's Nancy Hewitt. I've been a resident of Cumberland for over 30 years, and during that 30 years, I have so greatly appreciated the roads that had shoulders on them to ride a bicycle on and to walk along, and the sidewalks. I'd never lived in an area that had sidewalks before that. I lived in Powell, where there were certainly no sidewalks or shoulders. The roads were all dirt. The reason that I'm here tonight is that many of the people that live in my neighborhood, which is the part of Greeley Road up near Main Street, from Brookside down past Doughty Road to Main Street, the traffic on Greeley Road in the past few years has increased tremendously. And for some reason, people seem to feel that they need to go 60 miles an hour down the hill so their cars can make it up the hill again. So, what, I have signatures from quite a few people here in that neighborhood who would be interested in, first of all, having more speed limit signs put up. The first speed limit sign that you come to is at Doughty Road, and there are no other speed limit signs from there all the way to Main Street. Coming the other way, there's one that says 25, but there's none coming from Doughty Road up to Main Street at all. So, the other thing that people would like to see is when work is done on Greeley Road, which has to happen eventually in your planning, I'm sure, people in that built-up area where there are many children would like to see paved shoulders and/or even a sidewalk. I realize that building a sidewalk down that hill and up again would be difficult, but paved shoulders would be a start, that's for sure, because people in that area cannot access the sidewalks and shoulders up at Main Street to get to the stores and the schools and other places like that. People can use Valhalla Road, but first they have to walk on Greeley Road or ride on Greeley Road to get there as well, so it's not very safe. So, also, the people that signed this, this is limited strictly to that small neighborhood, all were supportive of the rail trail that's been proposed because projects such as this support healthy, local recreation for all ages, not just school-aged children with law fields and things like that, but for all ages. And I think it would provide safe travel for not only bicycles, but for walkers, joggers, parents with strollers, and young children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dottie, there's a number of council members that are part of the Climate Action Team. So, we will make sure that it gets on the agenda. Thank you for that.
Item 21-091, to consider and act on the adoption of a resolution to create a rail corridor advisory council for the proposed Casco Bay and Royal River Trails and appoint a town of Cumberland official to serve on such advisory council. So, a little bit of the back history here. This item was brought to our attention by Dick Woodbury, I believe it was back in July. And subsequently, the council debated it and moved to reject the addition of this community as part of that process. And since then, we've had a chance to give it a little more thought, and we decided to reconsider. And so, this evening, part of our reconsideration is to hear from a greater number of the folks in the community who have expressed interest to this matter via email, phone calls, face-to-face, et cetera. So, just to bring it back to everybody's forefront, Dick, I think I'd like to ask you to speak, and you had promised that you would bring somebody with us to give us a kind of an indication of how this operates in the going south. Dick Woodbury.
Thank you. Yes, Dick Woodbury. I'm from Yarmouth, and appreciate very much the council reconsidering this and allowing for a public comment. As you know, the vision of this trail is one that goes from Portland to Lewis and Auburn, but there are also other, you know, larger connections that would continue on, would continue on to Augusta, west of Freiburg, and then the Eastern Trail, which goes south from South Portland down to Kennebunk so far, and then will continue to go further south toward Kittery. So, the project of all these projects that's furthest along is the Eastern Trail, the one that goes from South Portland, south. And I did invite the executive director of the Eastern Trail to come because he's worked through a lot of the abutter issues and related questions that the council had, so he'd be pleased to answer questions at whatever time makes sense to the council.
I think we'd like to hear from him early on. I think we'd like to have some of the-
Sure, he'd like that, too.
All right. Put him right on the frying pan then.
So, this is John Kochmer, is the executive director.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, counselor, Mr. Town Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to come speak. I will say, the Eastern Trail has been a long haul over the last 20 years. We've built 24 miles of off-road trail that keeps people out of traffic on trail and a very different experience from riding on the road. Not that we're against road biking by any stretch, but the trail is really designed to be off-road, and we plan to eventually, as Dick said, continue the trail from Kennebunk, where it ends off-road now, to Kittery and working with various communities to do that. I will say, the rail corridor advisory council is an obvious next step, and other communities are working to have a foundation for looking at rail trails and opportunities to build on rail trails and, more importantly, just build interconnected trails. So, obviously, I'm an advocate of that. My organization, the Eastern Trail, promotes that and would like to suggest that that would be an excellent step toward eventually getting a trail, if that's the desire of the community and the town to be engaged in that. We at the Eastern Trail have a entity called the Eastern Trail Management District, and it's how we manage the trail. The trail would not exist without it. That entity is a nonprofit, but it's really quasi-municipal in that it's represented by all of the towns that bisect the trail or that have trail within it. And those towns that have built trail are the ones who put it out to bid, solicit comments from their residents, deal with abutters in terms of making sure they are aware and have opportunities to be engaged in the process, and maybe more importantly, even sway what happens on the trail to ensure that abutters are in a good place and advocates and proponents for the trail. It's not easy work, but it's obviously necessary. And again, without the Eastern Trail Management District, we would have a really challenging time because we get the public works departments, the rec departments of the cities and towns in southern Maine who actually do the trail building, putting it out to bid, dealing with feasibility work, et cetera, as well as the ongoing maintenance. So, in other words, we, the Eastern Trail, don't have a maintenance crew because that's all of the communities who are vested and have trail, and they're all very proud to have that trail. I will say, they compete with one another, which I encourage, to have the best trail. They all think they have the best trail, and I agree with all of them. And it is very much a really positive competitive atmosphere on that trail. Just a little bit more about feasibility, planning, construction. These trails are engineered. They need to be in order to last and be safe. So, it's not a matter of just being able to put stone dust down. Obviously, there's rail on it, there's removal, either twinning next to it, removing, but they need to be engineered. And they really are small road systems. And the reason for investing that way is to ensure, again, that they're safe, including slopes that need fences and ways of making sure people don't ride off them or fall off them or run off them, but also so they last. So, they are engineered little road projects. But again, that's for the long haul and to ensure that maintenance is reduced. They oftentimes, there's lots of state and federal money. The Eastern Trail would not exist without state and federal money. It's really where the bulk of monies come from, to do feasibility work, to do design work and engineering in order to have a fully baked plan to then put out to construction bid and get the dollars to do that. So, it's a really important part of the funding. It's also extremely important for private dollars because that is what leverages state and federal monies. And the Eastern Trail has been really fortunate to raise a fair amount of money, but nowhere near what the federal and state commitment has been. So, I just mentioned that as a really important aspect. And obviously, the rail corridor advisory council is a good step with Maine Department of Transportation and their state dollars and ultimately federal dollars, an important aspect of the work. A little bit on the abutters. We have a lot of abutters between South Portland and Kennebunk. I get feedback probably every day as the executive director of the organization and ultimately the person responsible. The bulk of it is positive or constructive criticism on an issue that may need repair or whatever the case may be. I never get feedback that we don't like the trail. I never get feedback, why did somebody build this trail? Always get feedback that it's a positive asset. In fact, those people that are getting in touch, those abutters, are the biggest users of the trail. And we have many, many users of different ilk. Bikers, walkers, runners, hikers, bird watchers, equestrian, hunters who use the trail to access other hunting grounds, lots of abutters. We all get along quite well. We've been very fortunate. We've had only minor incidences of various uses, and normally, we work those out if there's any clashes. But a lot of those people who are involved with the trail day to day are, in fact, the abutters, and they're usually the biggest proponents. I will say, the process of having a trail placed close to your property or, you know, maybe within sight of your property or whatever the situation might be, may seem scary. In fact, what we find from any trail in Maine or outside Maine is they're huge assets to people who live there, maybe they work there, maybe it's a business. But abutters are integral to the whole process in terms of the feasibility, in terms of the design, in terms of the construction. Just a really quick example, we're looking to build new trail from Kennebunk, south to north Burwick, an 11-mile stretch, hopefully doing engineering design sometime very soon. And as we started to walk that trail with the engineers who are doing feasibility work, we quickly realized that there are a couple of houses that are only a few feet from the, where the trail was originally planned, because there's been some early designs. And it seemed like not a great situation for anyone. We don't want the trail literally bumping up against people's houses, and I don't just mean their lots or their property, I mean literally their houses within 15 feet. So, the first thing we did as part of that process is think about what can we do differently? And in that case, we decided we would get away from the properties, cross the easement because there was room to do it, and actually get across a small stream and are thinking about building a bridge. So, we're building in what we anticipate would be a challenge for abutters. We don't want to create a difficult situation. They don't want it, and that way, the trail will work. So, we oftentimes have the best intentions until we talk to people that live there, work there, know the area, and that usually shapes that trail in a much, much better way. Lots of opportunity to do that, lots of public input, lots of process, all required by state and federal funding. So, there's no lack of public meetings, and obviously, the town would want to do that as well, just in terms of getting feedback. Lastly, I want to talk a little bit about economic impact. We know that trails are good for our health. The pandemic has really shown us that people want to get out. It's good for their mind, it's good for their body, and it's obviously been a good activity when we've been cooped up inside. We recently had done some trail counts on the Eastern Trail this summer, just in August. Maine Bicycle Coalition actually helped us do some of that with their counting device as well as a couple of regional entities. And all indications are, what we're hearing from trails across the country, is we have three to four times as many people using trails than ever have. There is lots of demand, lots of people want to stay healthy and get outdoors and get a bit of nature. But also, we know they provide alternative transportation. Again, almost every week, I hear from someone who wants to ride their bike from somewhere in southern Maine to Portland to work. And we have this thing called the Gap, which is a mile and a half section that we have yet to build. It's planned to go out to bid this fall with the town of Scarborough, so we're really excited about that. But when I get those calls about the Gap, when is it going to be built? When is it going to be built? It's always because I want to ride my bike to work, or I want to get to Portland and I don't want to drive my car. Incredible amount of people have said that to me, have emailed us, have commented. That alternative transportation is really important and desirable, and I think, once we get that link where it would be a lot easier with no riding on the road, you could ride to work, you could run to work, you could walk to work if you don't want to get there too early, and do whatever, however you want to do that is really important. The economic impact is also significant as well. We have some indication on the Eastern Trail. In 2017, 2018, we did some economic impact analysis. It's not as rigorous as I would like, so we are in the process of doing a more rigorous study sometime soon, working with Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission on better understanding our relationship to economic impact as well as the greater outdoor recreation and southern Maine industry on the economy. But we do know, in 2017, 18, we had about 250,000 people using the trail. We asked about 170 of those people very specifically, how much did you spend when you came to visit the trail? And that was roughly about $200 a person. So, we can't really project that over the 250,000 and just multiply it as much as we'd like to do that. But we do know there's a significant investment when people visit the trail. They're either staying at a hotel or a bed and breakfast, they're eating locally at restaurants, they're buying bike equipment when theirs breaks down, or they just decide they want a new bike. We do have, we know there's significant investment directly related to the trail as well as some indirect. And so, we do have some economic impact analysis we've done. Be glad to share that if there's interest in looking at that. And as I said, we're working on more vigorous. We also know, estimate the trail contributes about $3 million a year in that way. That is benefits coming from people who are focused on the trail and coming to Maine to use it and eat and stay and do all those sorts of things. We're also doing some economic impact analysis, probably even more important, at least from my perspective, when you want to build new trail. And that may be the position that would be more helpful to folks here. We will, in our economic impact analysis that we're about to do, look at the 11 miles from Kennebunk to north Burwick and make some projections with a economic impact company who does this for a living to better understand what that 11 miles will bring in terms of economic impact. We know it will bring health benefits. We know people want to exercise. We know a lot of that, but we really want to understand, what's the economic impact from a new section of 11 miles? It helps us advocate, it helps us get state and federal dollars as well as private dollars to leverage those state and federal dollars. I'm going to end there. I would be glad to answer any questions or clarify anything that I said.
John, I do have a question. Do you have a, any value on the trail? You talked about economics, but is there a cost associated with this?
Yes. We have spent about, collectively, we, about $11 million has been spent building 24 miles of trail. So, that- So that gives you an idea of the investment. Much of that has been federal monies passed to the state for trail building and pedestrian investments, non-motorized investments, those sorts of things. That's the best number I could give you for investment if I've answered that.
Well, I was coming more for the value. Let me see if I can get this wording the right. My concern is, and the council's concern was, that we would be stuck with costs that were not associated with. Do not understand.
I see. In other words, is the infrastructure of the trail a costly endeavor?
Yes.
Yeah. I would suggest that the upfront building of the trail is a significant cost involved. So knowing what that is, and it really varies depending. You really need to ask the experts what the cost is of the trail you want to build. I can tell you, our trail is relatively expensive because we're in a very urbanized area. When we build new trail, we sometimes have to get easements. We have to buy those easements. It's not as clean as using an existing rail corridor. We're primarily built on Unitil high-pressure gas line. Be thankful you don't have that. But they have been exceptional partners. And in fact, the trail wouldn't exist without them. But the initial investment is a significant cost. There are crossings, water crossings, infrastructure, bridges, which may be what you're getting at. Those have a cost and need to be considered in terms of long-term capital plans for replacement. Not having vehicles on these roads or trails greatly extends the life of them. So don't think of it as a road or a highway where we have heavy traffic. We're putting salt on it, those sorts of things. So there's a much higher life expectancy of the infrastructure of the trail, but it's not forever, you know? And I think those costs can be estimated by folks who work in that regularly. How many culverts do you have? How many bridges do you have? What's the distance? Lots go into it, and I wouldn't generalize our costs because we're in a bit of a unique position in that the Unitil Gas Company often pays for those sorts of things because they want to protect their asset, which has a lot more value than our trail. So we're a little bit unique because of that.
Thank you.
I guess I didn't really hear any answer. Bottom line is, what's it going to cost the town of Cumberland for that three, three and a half miles? And I would assume someplace along all the trails you've built, you've had similar projects. And I think we need to know, what's it cost the town of Kennybunk? What's it cost the town of, I mean, we need some real numbers. And I don't know how you could expect us to come out and support this if you haven't had any numbers to give us.
Understood. I do think that feasibility needs to determine those specifics, but I can give you a better understanding and more specifics on the Eastern Trail. As I said, I would be careful about comparing that across the board, but at least it's a, maybe it'll give you a little more understanding if that would be helpful.
It would.
On average, including all of the feasibility work, all of the engineering design, the permitting, the construction, all A to Z. And as I said, these are engineered trails. These are not, you know, just put stone dust down. So there's a lot goes into them. We've paid about $700,000 to $800,000 a mile, A to Z. So that's, and it was actually in the beginning a little bit lower for some of the communities. So more recently, seven to eight, more than a half million dollar earlier. That's how we came up with the $11 million for 24 miles. That was A to Z. That was everything that we had to do, feasibility, permitting, engineering design. And all of that stuff should not be underestimated in terms of cost. There are real costs associated with that. We're looking at 11 miles of engineering design from Kennebunk to north Berwick now. The estimated cost is $910,000 to do the engineering design. And we're in a crazy market that we don't know what we're going to get back. It might be twice that, hopefully not. But to give you an idea, you know, that's some of the numbers for us.
And what's the usual municipality split, federal grants, that kind of stuff?
Typically, 20% for the municipality, 80% for the state or fed. Some of them vary a little bit. And I will say, the Eastern, so the Eastern Trail is a bit of a complicated beast. I like to just say the Eastern Trail, and I'm the director of the Eastern Trail because it's simple. We actually have two entities. One is called the Eastern Trail Alliance. It's a nonprofit that acts like a typical nonprofit that would build a trail, advocate, raise money, have ambassadors and do stewardship and all those sorts of things. And I mentioned the Eastern Trail Management District earlier, another nonprofit, but it's really quasi-municipal. And they do the maintenance and they do the building and they do the bidding. These are municipal projects, municipally controlled projects when they're doing the feasibility, design and build of them. But 80% of the money is coming from someone else.
Thanks, Mike.
That would be the expectation.
Thank you very much.
Eddie Belsch, on the call.
Yeah, I was just going to kind of walk through that a little bit. So again, understanding that the, understanding that the Eastern Trail is going to be potentially somewhat different in terms of scope and size. But if you've got $11 million for 24 miles of road, that comes out to about $458,000 per mile on average there. And if you're saying 80% is funded by the state or the feds, that would leave 20% towards the municipality, which comes out to about $91,000 per mile. Does that sound about right? I mean, I know I've got a calculator in front of me.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't doubt your math.
Okay.
$100,000.
But those are old prices. He's saying the new prices are 800 to 900.
Correct. So yeah, I'm just taking the average there.
The cost of construction and since the pandemic has doubled everything.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
And just, may I, Bob? What is the, do you know what the annual cost would be for us to maintain? Or would we have to maintain?
Yeah. As I mentioned, our Eastern Trail Management District and the communities do the cutting. They remove trees when they fall. They repair the trail if it needs repair. Most of our trail is not paved. We have a dirt trail, mostly because the gas line won't let us pave it because they have to access it and they don't want to dig pavement up. We're fine with it because it controls speed. We actually like it. And we like more of a country setting in a busy populated area. But they do all of that work. So we don't do the maintenance. We don't get the bill, so to speak. But it's generally within the budgets of Public Works or the Rec Department or whoever is doing that. Now, I will say, some of the municipalities we deal with are quite large. South Portland, Scarborough, you know, they have significant capacity, Kennebunk even. And others don't have as much capacity. We collectively share the load a bit. So Kennebunk, for example, does work in a rundle, which doesn't have nearly the resources. They have a lot of trail. They also have an incredible amount of fencing that was required because it just so happens there's a lot of slope off the trail there. The railroad, railroads always had to be flat because they don't like going up hills or down hills. So there's areas that are built up quite high and a rundle happened to be one of them. So we don't blame them for that. We get work from other towns to help them. So there's a lot of, a lot of work between communities, but I can't give you an honest answer of what their bill is, but it's mostly part of their routine budgets. We don't have a lot of capital improvement projects because the trail's been there for 20 years or less. We haven't hit that mark. The bridges, pedestrian bridges will last 50, 80 years. So there's a long-term investments that we haven't gotten close to having to worry about.
Thank you.
I have a question. So I liked your comment about hunting because that's one of the concerns that I know that a lot of our residents that have property along that line have. So I do have a concern about people's ability to hunt in that area. My wife and I were batting this around the other night also. And so if people are coming from out of state, do you have rest facilities along the line? Are those things part of the planning process? When there is no access in a community, are you, are there access points built in or planned in the design work? And maybe you could speak to some of those items.
Yeah, absolutely. There are access points that are deliberate in the process, the design process. I will say, some of those have changed over time. Really quick example. There was an access point built in Biddeford close to Southern Maine Medical Center. I think that's what they're called. And the kiosk and the point of entry was built about 300 yards away from them. After it was built, they said, by the way, we would like to give you some of our parking lot and put up a kiosk and have this as the main entry point, which we didn't have that sort of parking facility. So that's become the de facto point of access. So some of that evolves through partnership. The hospital actually uses the trail for rehab. They've been a great partner and supporter. They just repaved it, relined it, put signage up to promote it. But there are access points built in. There's typically parking built in. We try to use municipal parking if we can. A municipality ball field, something that exists because the municipalities are really the ones providing the parking. It's not always. An example I gave with the hospital, maybe other businesses, that happens to be in a very urban area. But access is important. And the whole trail is ADA. It has to be if you want to use federal and state dollars. There's just no choice about that. So there's lots of slope considerations. You can only have so much slope. You have to be able to get ADA devices through bollards that are keeping out motorized vehicles and have proper width. We do not provide bathrooms, independent restrooms, for example. But we do partner with, again, municipalities and communities who have restrooms either very close to the trail or not too far from the trail to be able to offer public restrooms. But we don't build them. We simply have kiosks and entry points and negotiated parking. We don't own it. It's mostly municipal in some businesses. Is that helpful? I will mention hunters. There, we often get calls. Someone will say there are hunters on the trail. Did you know that? And I'll say, yes, I do know that. And they're allowed to be on the trail. We're getting, we're trying to educate multiple users on the trail. They're not allowed to hunt on the trail. And we, along with Unitil, decided as part of our co-location agreement that that would not be an acceptable use to hunt from the trail. There is one exception in Scarborough Marsh. That is a state refuge where hunting is allowed. I haven't ever actually seen anyone hunt from the trail. I will say, in communicating with hunters and seeing hunters, they have all been respectful, well-versed in safety. And we don't get, we've never had a conflict. Thankfully, we've never had any sorts of injuries. We've never had a close call. We've only had people wondering why are there hunters? And we're now educating folks that, yes, you can travel by foot on the trail. You may have blaze orange, you have to have blaze orange. And you may see people with their weapons, you know, for hunting and that's okay as long as they're not hunting. And what we say is you can traverse to legal hunting grounds. It's a responsibility of the hunters, just as if they're anywhere else, to ensure that they aren't going to be too close to the trail, that their target is not endangering people. The law is a little bit gray because it talks about distances from structures. And I've asked our attorney, is a trail a structure? And I got a very gray answer. So it is, it is something to think about. It is, we consider hunters a user group in that they can travel on the trail. And as I said, they've been respectful and we haven't, we haven't had any bad incidents.
Dick, you should have brought him first.
I had a question just more. In your experience on the advisory councils that are formed and how that process generally works. You know, I'm looking at HP 1004, which is a law that was passed apparently on June 10th of this year. It appears to actually have already designated this corridor as a rail-to-trail corridor. So it seems to me that this has maybe already occurred. I know we're talking about creating this advisory council to discuss the topic, and I'm personally, I guess generally, in favor of the idea here. But I'm just curious as to what your experience is with the state legislation and how this process works. I mean, are we forming a, an exploratory council to figure out how to implement this? Or is it to discuss whether it is ultimately implemented? If that makes sense?
Yeah, great question. I'm maybe not going to attempt to answer that. I think that Dick could answer that question better than I. I will say this, it's all new. It's a really positive step for trail and for, you know, for rail trail. It's a really positive step from the state in order to create dialogue and discussion. And that's really, you know, the gist of it from my perspective. I was not involved in the nitty-gritty of the legislative details a little bit, bits and pieces. Most of what I know came from Dick and others who have been working on that. So I wouldn't do it justice. So that's what I have to offer on that, unfortunately, yeah.
That's fine. Would you like to? Yeah, I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Dick.
Thank you, Dick.
Thank you.
There were two bills this legislative session that related to this. One of them, and I think you read the way that it was introduced, listed for trails that would become trail until rail. The Department of Transportation said, no, 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 we need a process in order to authorize these as trails. And so the department put in a separate bill that created the rail corridor advisory council process and said, you know, in order for us to be able to authorize something like this, you need to go through this process and allow everybody to come to the table and talk about what the best use is. So we basically, the other bill got changed to an active transportation plan and the rail corridor advisory use bill was passed.
Understood.
And that's where we are.
Okay. So it sounds more of like complimentary bill that is needed in order to execute on something at the end of the day.
Yeah, I mean, there really are. It's, it's, it's an interesting time for this whole conversation because there's, I guess, five bills that I think are kind of relevant to this whole thing. Two of them are looking at expanded passenger rail service from Portland to Lewis and Auburn and also to Bangor. So they're thinking about our rail infrastructure and what's the best use for it. One of them is requiring the Department of Transportation to create an active transportation plan that includes looking at the state-owned rail corridors as potential parts of an active transportation plan. And then the third bill is the rail corridor advisory council process and an accompanying bill that has already authorized it for the Mountain Division Trail, which is the one that goes from Portland west out to Freiburg. So those are the five bills. And, you know, my perspective on them is that they're all working in a complimentary way to think about this infrastructure resource that the state has and how to best serve the public interest in finding out, you know, what makes, which corridors make sense for which use.
Understood. Thank you very much.
So this is a public hearing this evening. And before we get started with that, we have a proposed resolution that we may or may not adopt and we may or may not amend. And, but I think what I'd like to have is, I'd like, Mark, you to read it to us, the public, and see what it is. And then we'll open this meeting up to, for a public hearing.
See if I have that in hard copy here in front of me. Would you like me to read the entire? Are you talking about the motion or are you talking about the three-page document?
I thought it was only two pages. Don't be cruel.
But around just down at the bottom, your three points of the actual resolution.
If you can summarize it, I guess. There we go. We won't torture you or the public.
Sure. So maybe Mr. Manager can pull it up here for folks to see. But I can also give you a little background. This was a, I guess, a draft of a potential This was a, I guess, a draft of a potential letter of support or letter requesting the Department of Transportation to create this advisory council that Mr. Woodbury was kind enough to provide to kind of, I think, cut down the work for the council, for, for most of the councils along the potential trail. So I appreciate that. I took a look at the document based on our initial discussions and I added some track changes, as you can see there in red. And so the, the first portion, the wherethes, as, as they're called in the recitals of a, of a contract or an agreement, give a lot of the background of the, the history of the trails and how we got to this point. But, but the last section is basically the resolution that the town would potentially, again, this is a draft, would potentially put out on this topic. And it reads as follows. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Cumberland, assembled this day of blank, 2021, that the Town of Cumberland, or the Cumberland Town Council hereby petitions the main Department of Transportation to create a rail corridor use advisory council to discuss and consider the future use of the Casco Bay SLA corridor as an off-road multi-use trail. Point two, as part of that process and as a precondition of the Town of Cumberland's initial support for the project, that at least one representative from the Cumberland, from Cumberland's Town Council be included in the membership of any rail corridor use advisory council to ensure the rights and concerns of Cumberland residents and abutters to any proposed trail be thoroughly considered and respected prior to the creation of any off-road multi-use trail network. And finally, three, the Cumberland Town Council also petitions the main Department of Transportation where lawful and appropriate to enforce the 2018 amended discontinuance agreement, or in the alternative, provide a notice and comment procedure to consider public comment prior to amending or extending that agreement. So that, as I mentioned, was based on the original text of this letter of support requesting the Department of Transportation to create this advisory council. We added this draft language to make sure that it was very clear, that we wanted to make sure someone from the Town Council or the, a town official was a part of that advisory council. So we had a seat at the table and that the rights of abutters were specifically mentioned in that document as well.
Thank you, Mike.
Sure.
I have a question for Dick. Has Yarmouth already petitioned the DOT for an advisory council and has that advisory council already been approved?
Petitions recommending an advisory council have passed in Portland, Falmouth, Yarmouth, North Yarmouth, Powno, Lewiston, Lisbon, and Freeport. All of those petitions are, you know, they're not identical. They, they all had a similar starting place with adjustments that met the, the, you know, specific interests of those particular communities. But all of them recommend to the Department of Transportation creating one of these advisory councils.
My understanding from speaking with Representative Moriarty last week was that Yarmouth had already been, I don't know if it was accepted or whatever it is, that this advisory council has been approved.
The only communication I know about this is the communication that you shared with me. What I, what I do know is-
I've been a bulldog on this one, getting my-
What, what I, what I do know is that the Department of Transp, Department of Transportation already plans rail corridor advisory councils for the Mountain Division Corridor, which is the one from Portland west to Freiburg, and also the Mary Meeting Corridor, which is the one that goes from Topsom up to Gardner into Augusta. You know, we're, we kind of, you know, my hope was that we would get enough interest in our communities that we'd be on a similar timeframe with those other two advisory council processes. So, you know, that's what led me to come to you and to the other communities in the region.
All right. Thank you, Dick.
Okay, we'll open this up to the public for comments. Those who would like to speak can approach the podium and state their name and their address, and their remarks will be addressed to the chair and by extension, the council. And we won't allow any sidebar. So please introduce yourself. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bea Schoenwald. I live at 129 Middle Road in Cumberland. And I very much support this rail-trail concept. It sounds like a very appropriate approach to it with the advisory council working with main DOT. Even though we have nice shoulders on Middle Road now, being a walker, I notice that cars are going much faster. Many of those drivers are distracted, so it's not as, as safe an environment as I would like when I walk. I also enjoy Eastern Trail for bike riding. So I would like to encourage Cumberland to participate in this process, at least to take it to the next step. I know it's all, comes down to finances, as Mark indicated from Eastern Trail, that there is a lot of money available through state and federal dollars. But I would like to strongly encourage the town to participate in the advisory council and to advocate for Cumberland resident, residents, and particularly for a convenient access point for Cumberland residents' use of the trail. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Labrie. I live at 270 Main Street. And first, just really thank the town for all they've done with the side. We live right on Main Street. We have nice new shoulders now, beautiful sidewalk across the way from us. And as somebody mentioned before, just particularly since the pandemic, you know, the number of people out walking, out riding their bikes, we've seen a huge growth and really appreciate all the investment the town has made in, in shoulders, in sidewalks, and in the incredible network of preserved spaces that we have in this town. We are so, so lucky to have such incredible opportunities for this town. We've greatly, we've lived here a little over 20 years and just have seen that flourish and just really, really appreciate it. I'm here to support this, this motion, really would love to see the town get involved. I know, I understand there's some, you know, major issues and concerns about it, which is why having a commission makes a lot of sense. I think one of the really exciting things about this is how it can connect our neighborhood, our, our community with other, other communities. I wrote an email to you all. You may remember, I used to bike down, down Route 9. Having the shoulders come is really cool. But I've had way just too many close calls. It actually just takes one close call to be too many to just be nervous about biking into, biking into Portland. But I think, you know, being able to bike down Tuttle and hop on this a little bit more direct, a little bit flatter, would be, would be really nice. So I just really encourage you, and I also really appreciate you bringing this back on the agenda and giving us the opportunity to, to think about it again. I know it's a big issue, but it's such an exciting envision, this regional approach, connecting our communities, creating a, a new opportunities for transportation and for, for exercise. I'm going to add one use for the trail, which is roller skiing. Our son is big into the Nordic skiing team and in the offseason, he does a lot of roller skiing with his club. And it'd be nice to have some spots where there's a little bit more room to do that. So thank you again very much for reconsidering this and I hope you'll support it. Thank you.
Bill Fall, 371 Main Street. Good evening. The shirt was unintentional tonight, it just happened. As someone who, Mr. Vale will attest to, accosts him regularly on his bicycle at Food Stop in the morning when he's getting his coffee to check in. You know, thanks again for bringing this up. I was, I was surprised that initially the council didn't support it. But hearing the concerns tonight, I understand, right? Having a lot, a lot more information on it is very helpful. So again, as someone who's, you know, ridden similar things, you know, throughout the region, in, in the state of Maine, my, are, you probably got a letter from my daughter the other night, at least I hope you did, that, you know, she's overseas riding trails like this, right? You know? So they work, they're great. And to Jonathan's point, you know, it is, it is nice to have something like that. Kathleen and I were on a bike over New Hampshire a couple of weeks ago and got clipped by a car, right? So, you know, we're, we're obviously fine, but, you know, having spaces like this is important. So to the cost, I understand, right? We're all on tight budgets, it's important. I would expect that in this community, we would be able to find some ways, right, to get some folks that would come and assist and, and make this work, right? And kind of ease the burden on the town as well. So I do think there's a pretty big community. As someone who lives on Main Street and can count the bikes in the, in the dozens each day that run by my window and make me jealous that I can't be out there doing it, you know, please, I think there's a lot of support in the town for this. So, thanks. Thank you.
Dave Witherell, 5 Candlewick Lane. I'm greatly in favor of this project. I've been cycling on Cumberland roads for 21 years now. There are some roads I no longer cycle on. And it's, as we know, speeding and distracted drivers. So I'm, I'm a lot more careful. A project like this would get walkers and cyclists on a safe place to be, would take them off some of the roads. And also, I want to point out, there are cities and towns all over this country that have these great bike trails. My son lives in Boulder, Colorado, and it's just amazing, these trails that you can get on. And I think this would be another feather in our cap for all of the towns north of Portland to have this. It would be really something I think we could be proud of. And I think it would also be a, a big tourist draw, too. Thank you.
Phil Gleason from Hillside Ave. Longtime Cumberland resident, longtime cyclist. And I just want to echo what others have said. I think this, you know, it's obviously a project that has some challenges. It's got a long way to go. But I think it will be studied every inch of the way and I think the financial considerations are, are important. But I think it would be unfortunate if we didn't at least get involved in the process at the start. By getting involved at the start, we have a, a seat at the table and we will continue to have a seat at that table. So I would, I would urge the council to take the first step in what is undoubtedly going to be a long and, and detailed study and have ample opportunity for, for public input throughout. So, thank you.
Mr. Gleason was a former councillor and former chair of this body.
Hi, excuse me. Good evening. My name is Phil Soul. I live on 147 Middle Road. So my property is, I guess now my abutter is what it's called. I'm 42, 43 years old. Lived in Cumberland my whole entire life, grew up on Middle Road. Growing up in Cumberland is the greatest thing ever. I'm still close to all my best friends. I went to Greeley High School, I graduated in 98, and I'm still close friends. And these friends are from spending my summers together, biking from my house, oh, let's go to meet in Yarmouth and go swimming wherever, oh, let's go handy-handies, get some ice cream, or let's go to Falmouth, do those things that, that you can do in this kind of town. Now, that was 30, 30 years ago. Now I wouldn't think about letting my stepson or my daughter, who's three years old, do anything like that because it's not safe driving on the road. The only time I feel safe riding the bike with my daughter on the back of me is, actually, I pretty much go to Boulevard. I actually, even, I have a three-year-old, so if I want to go for a run with her, like, I want to run with my daughter, I can't do that anywhere around here. I have to go to the Boulevard. I have to drive to Portland to do this, when I could literally go outside my back steps and go for a run. So I urge you just to at least take this next, next step forward, start a committee. I think that's just the right thing to do. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
John Tancenyus, 44, Laurel Lane, and also Chair of the Recreational Trails Subcommittee. First of all, I'm not a biker. I do own a bike. It hasn't seen me in a year. The other thing I want to say is I, I've lived in Cumberland since 1995, but before moving to Cumberland, I lived in the Washington DC area for about 17 and a half years. And one of the things that I really liked down there is they have a whole network of bike paths. You can use them for commuting, you can use them for recreation, you can take kids on them, you can go for a walk, go for a run, and it's really great. Came up here and started looking and there really weren't any. Now we have wonderful trails in the woods. I know them very well. And I have to say, in listening to Jonathan, I'm very glad to hear this one is professionally designed and constructed because I've done my share of trying to move gravel on the trails in Cumberland. So, but anyhow, I'm here just to really support the idea of moving forward with this because I think it'll be a wonderful idea to, for really everyone involved. And it's something different than we have now. I mean, our trails are used by mountain bikers, hikers, walkers now, but this is a trail that could be used for commuting. It could be used by many people just to go from Portland or from here to Portland or here to Freeport or any of the other towns. So it's a, it's something that I think is a really great idea and I do think you should move forward with it. Thank you.
All right. Bruce Sherwin, live on Blanchard Road here in Cumberland. And everybody so far has talked positively about this, and I'm going to start out talking positively. It does look like a good program on the surface. But if I was on the council, I would say to myself, I don't know enough about this to really decide. We don't know the details. And I don't think going to the Rails and Trails Advisory Committee is where to get the details. I think that this needs to be tabled and a committee in town that has Cumberland interests for Cumberland taxpayers should go through this process, maybe get a list from these folks that know what they're doing, of what we should be looking at, and look at it, see what it's going to cost us, and do a little bit of cost-benefit analysis of it. Again, if it works out, fine. I think it's a good program. But I hate to see it cost the Town of Cumberland a lot of money when we've got priorities to set involving water for people and stuff. There's, you know, there's some priorities to set here. And again, I've talked to one councillor on here and I think he agreed with me that we do not know enough about this to make a vote tonight. This should be tabled and looked at in more depth within Cumberland, not on the rail advisory. And at, at the very least, you would be giving some direction to whoever you put onto that board, what we're looking for from the Town of Cumberland. That's my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Russell and I live on Tuttle Road. And last year, you guys took a big chunk of my front yard and put a sidewalk in, and I love it. I love it, I love it, I love it, I love it. I love seeing kids out there on the sidewalk. I love seeing my neighbors ride by. It is awesome and thank you so much. And I want to see more of it. And it just is such a great way to pull a community together. And I think this, I think this is a great project. I also agree with you in that we don't know enough about it. In my understanding, I, I believe that the advisory council is a good way to get answers. I don't see the harm in voting to participate in the council that will, will give us a place to ask questions. We look to you, our council members, to gather information, to make informed decisions for us. We give you our voice. We vote you in and you are our voice. But we, we need you to also look at the whole picture. And I think that being on the advisory council will- And I think that being on the Advisory Council will help us get answers to the questions. I wouldn't vote for it today either. There's no way. We don't know nearly enough about it. But let's get the information, and then let's come back and talk about it some more. But I implore you to move this forward so we can get some more information and not just drop it tonight. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Erin McAllister, and I live at 39 Rangers Way. And I just wanted to add to the conversation directly to the people who are most affected, to the abutters of this project. I kind of want to just offer my unique perspective on what it's like to have a trail go through your backyard. So, on the other side of town, my property abuts the Rhines Forest and is separated from the forest only by a stone wall, beautiful stone wall, along the red trail. And as has been mentioned before, like with the pandemic, traffic was certainly much higher. We didn't have a counter. I don't know what the numbers were, but there were a lot more people going through there. And I have to say, it was a pleasure to see people out there, especially, first of all, because, you know, everybody was extremely isolated, so it was nice to see other people. And it was also nice to see people out there in nature and recreating. And I don't think anyone was commuting another way to work through the Rhines, but I loved that concept as well. So, yeah, I just, I guess, I just want to, like, encourage you to keep an open mind about it as you go forward in deciding. And I think that the Advisory Council is a good way to go forward with getting more information. Thank you.
Hi, David Brink. I've been a resident here for 30 years, both and ride my bikes in the woods, on the streets as well. And first of all, thanks for your ears here tonight. And Jonathan, thank you for your presentation. It was very helpful for me to know what's going on in Portland South.
Where do you live?
Right here in Cumberland. But the trails go in Portland South.
David? Right here, over here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You want to address us, and you want to tell us your address?
Seven Willow Lane, right here in downtown Cumberland for 30 years.
Thank you.
Again, ride my bikes, hiking the trails as well for those number of years. And the growth over the 30 years, both in the woods, has been phenomenal. Great trails with the Cumberland trails, what they've done, what you've done out back here, very good. And that's got two miles of trails out there, and now we're doing three miles of trails we want down here. And what Dick said earlier, Portland's adopted it, Falmouth, let's keep going on up, all the way up. We're missing a key ingredient, Cumberland. And it's well worth the ideas for this advisory, just to help put us on the map. Yes, there's concerns in all the areas, but it's certainly, certainly worth the efforts that we can do, that Cumberland can do, to bring everything together, to move things north. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Caleb King. I live off Deep Creek Drive off Middle Road, and I am an abutter to the proposed trail system, and I am here to speak in opposition to the trail system. I have heard the proposal provided by the Rails and Trails Conservancy, and I understand the allure to some. However, I still do not believe that this trail system would benefit the town of Cumberland as it is being sold. The largest fundamental issue with the trail is that there is no public access point to the trail system in the town of Cumberland. So, what's the point in supporting it? The most proximal access points to Cumberland is either in Yarmouth or in Falmouth, at Portland Street, or on Johnson Road. There is no public parking on Johnson Road, neither is there on Portland Street. So, as a biker or walker coming from Cumberland Center, you would have to make the two-mile drive down Middle Road in either direction to even access the trail in Cumberland. So, with all the private access along the trail, there's really only a benefit to those in the neighboring towns of Cumberland. If you're riding to Portland, why would you need a trail through Cumberland if you're just going to hop on Johnson Road anyway? Sorry, I lost my voice. So, essentially, all that is be creating is a throughway from Portland to downtown Yarmouth or Points and Falmouth. People traveling from north down to Portland get to enjoy the backside of Presumscott Streets Industrial District, which I'm sure is nice. So, and then another issue is that something that doesn't directly benefit the residents of Cumberland seems to be spearheaded with the town's resources in terms of maintenance. The most important consideration for the town council at this time would be protecting the 39 property owners who directly abut the proposed trail system. Arguably, there will be tens of thousands of pedestrians using the trail system in a year. Why is this, if there is no direct benefit to the Cumberland residents as a whole, would the town support something like this? There's no need to introduce more through traffic from outside residents to the town and ruin the privacy and ruralness that myself and 38 other abutters enjoy at this time. Thank you for your time.
Hello. I am Christina Mitchell. I live on Shady Run Lane in Cumberland Center.
Pull the microphone down, please. Thank you.
Christina Mitchell. I live on 23 Shady Run Lane in Cumberland Center. And I haven't been a biker for many years. I rediscovered it when the pandemic started. I have to say, I'm more of a swimmer. And when I found out that the pools and the gym were pretty much closed to me with the pandemic, I rediscovered my bike. I live off of Greeley Road, which I now have shoulder envy hearing about all these other roads. But I tend to cut through Valhalla and then through to the other neighborhoods, to Main Street, over to Tuttle. And if I could have an area that was relatively flat that I could ride on, and I could get to Falmouth, I could get to European Bakery or whatever, that would be a dream. A few years ago, I was riding on Greeley. I did a big loop from Shady Run to Main Street to Tuttle and back up Greeley. And it was terrifying on Greeley. It's bumpy, it's another issue, but I found it wasn't enjoyable. And I now cut through Twin Brooks and do just a small part of Greeley, but I get sideswiped. And one time, I had to, like, literally run my bike toward a bunch of sheep in order to get out of the way, and it was frightening. So, I would still have to get over to Tuttle, perhaps, to access this, but it would be a joy to be able to get to Yarmouth and Falmouth. So, I appreciate you considering it again, and I hope that you get more information from the Advisory Council. Thank you.
Can I speak again? May I?
One minute.
I just want to reemphasize or underline, a lot of people here have said that they want to go to the Advisory Council to learn more about this. That's not the place to go. They are going to look out for the Rails and Trails, not the town of Cumberland. We need somebody, a committee in Cumberland, to look at this heavy duty, to see how it's going to affect our town. Rails and Trails is not going to look out for it, and one member on the committee is not going to be able to represent us that way. And when we do say, "Go ahead" to the committee, we want that person to know what we found out here. Again, I just wanted to underline that because nobody else has said it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I really had no intentions of speaking tonight, but hearing that there's a lot of people for this, it makes me a little bit concerned. I, myself, am a abutter. I'm 25 Shirley Lane. I'm possibly the newest abutter, and that's one of the reasons that I picked that location is because I'm a third generation of my family to live in that land.
Your name?
Oh, sorry. Jaclyn Story. I just have a lot of concerns about how this is happening. We've been told that, in the last meeting, that abutters were contacted, and they weren't. So, now I'm questioning every single thing that's being told by these people. So, my family's a big hunting family. What is that going to do to them? You said that it's going to be fine. Increased traffic is really going to push away any wildlife and allow that access. So, what about that? So, what about the winter months? We have three glorious months. How often is it going to get used in the winter? Is that now more maintenance for the town to groom those trails for people to be able to use them? We've said that it wasn't paved. Well, we're really talking about road bikes being on this path. Is it feasible to be biking on it if it's not paved, if it's a gravel road? So, what type is it? Is it gravel or is it paved? Because we're talking about two very different things here. So, there's a lot up in the air. If the Advisory Board Council is truly to investigate it, then I'm not opposed to it. But if that's just a figurehead to then just go ahead and do it without the opportunity to say no, then absolutely I would agree that we shouldn't have that. Second of all, or I guess there's lots of points that I've made, but how is it going to be chosen who is on the Advisory Board Committee amongst the town council? There is one abutter on the town council. Is she going to be automatically put as that person because she has the most direct effect? Or is it going to be someone else? So, lots of questions that haven't been answered yet. Maybe the Advisory Board will get those answers, but is that really what that's doing? Or is it just giving it a leeway to be an automatic thing? Thank you.
Okay. One statement of fact. I believe there's 8,500 residents of the town of Cumberland?
Right. Pretty close, 84.
This town council is going to represent all 8,500. With that, I'll close the public hearing, and I will open it to discussion amongst the board. I'm happy to lead off.
I'll start for you, Bob.
Thank you.
I have been aware of this project for a number of years. Actually, I attended a meeting in Falmouth probably three, three and a half years ago when this idea was first becoming an idea, and I was initially in favor of it. I thought it was a great idea. It is, after all, in my backyard. And then I started learning a little bit more about it, and I started thinking about literally hundreds of thousands of people using this trail through the back of my property. And I understand the benefit to Cumberland, people who would use it. But for all of you Cumberland people, there are 8,500 of you. There are 10 others from, not from Cumberland probably, people who are using it from out of state. This isn't a trail that's going to help us connect with our neighbors. I don't know how you think that's going to help you, a trail three and a half miles long through, along the highway, down along between Middle Road and 295 are going to help you connect with your neighbor. But I think that's a great idea. If that's what happens, that's what happens. But there will also be tens of thousands of others who are not your neighbors. I'm open to the Advisory Council. My understanding from Representative Moriarty was that the Advisory Council is being considered by the DOT as of last week. I did some more digging, and I was looking for the law, and I found the law that delineates the number of people. The Advisory Council is only 15 people. That's the maximum. It cannot represent every community along this route if 15 is the maximum. So, there's no guarantee that Cumberland is going to be chosen, although I have asked Representative Moriarty to get me on the list, whether it's as an abutter or as a Cumberland Town Councillor. I don't care who you appoint for this. I know the manager has also spoken to his contacts at the DOT, so we are advocating. We're advocating, I believe this is a done deal. I think the legislation makes it a done deal. I said that weeks ago. I said that weeks ago, and then I found that Representative Bell from Yarmouth passed this resolution that designated, as of January 1st, 2020, the St. Lawrence and Atlantic Rail Corridor from 1.74 in Portland to 25.96 in Auburn as a trail until rail corridor. So, that's already done. What? Sorry. It was finally passed 6/10/21.
It was finally passed in a revised version that only calls on the Department of Transportation to create an active transportation plan.
And that is this one that was passed June 16.
No, that's a different bill. They have different LD numbers.
Right. This designates this as a rail-to-trail corridor, and then this designates the Trail Corridor Advisory.
The version of the bill that you're looking at that Representative Bell introduced, the language that you're looking at was "as introduced." The main Department of Transportation said, "We can't accept that. We're not ready to authorize these as a trail." And so, they amended that bill simply to require an active transportation.
So, the DOT tells the legislature what they can do?
Point of order here. Let's address the chair when you want to speak, and I'll recognize you.
Okay. Well, anyway, I do think it's a done deal. I think it's going to happen, and I have an interest in abutters' concerns, not just, you know, on Middle Road, we're fairly, you know, I have four acres, Jaclyn has four acres, Caleb has four acres along that rail corridor. But I have concerns in Falmouth, if you go to the Presumscott River, those houses have that railroad track right there by their houses, and we're looking at hundreds of thousands of people. I've done my homework on this. Hundreds of thousands of people using this trail. It is a corridor. It is a commuter rail. It is a way for people to get from one place to another. And I actually support biking as a way, I just think it's, as a way to save fossil fuels. I just, I am concerned with the process. I had something else that I'm stalling because it has escaped me, something else I wanted to say that was particularly poignant, but.
I will give you another opportunity.
It might come back to me.
Mike?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I said this a few weeks back during our last council session. One of the reasons I attempted to make some revisions to this document was to make sure it was clear to the Rail Corridor Advisory Council that this is not a rubber stamp on the project itself, but rather, it is an intention to be a part of the process. So, again, I know Mr. Sherman here has mentioned, Sherman has mentioned that, you know, this is not the place to get answers. I would respectfully disagree with that. I think this is a great place for us to get answers. Us sitting and talking about it on our own does not get us to the table, does not get us to be part of the solution here. My concern is if we do not get involved, that this is moving at the legislative level and at the administrative level with the Department of Transportation. And if we just say we are not for this council, or we don't want to participate in this council, then we are left with neighboring towns making the decision for us and our fate being sealed on what this thing looks like, where they're on and off ramps, what the engineering looks like, and how it works in general. And so, I am a proponent of us participating where we can on this council to learn more and to actively make sure that abutters rights, both abutters that are for the project, which I've heard a few tonight as well, as well as those who are against the project as well because I think those need to be factored into the consideration, so.
I remembered what it was. Can I add?
Go ahead.
I, this is how much I believe this project is going to go through, and I told Dick this a couple of weeks ago when we met. I've already contacted, reached out to Central Main Power. Central Main Power has an easement across our properties for a single-line low-voltage transmission. They have a bright line proposal to increase the level of that transmission from a single-line low-level transmission to a higher level of transmission. It has had no activity. It has had no activity on it since 2018, I think. They're currently working on part of that same bill with the Mid Coast for non-transmission line, whatever the power company people mean. I've already reached out to Central Main Power to see if they might be interested in burying their high voltage lines under this potential trail to actually add some relief to the abutters. So it might be a way similar to Unitil, helping you fund the eastern trails south of Portland to help, at least in Cumberland, because that's where a large measure of that power line is. And then when it gets to Falmouth, I don't know what will happen. But it would be maybe to Central Main Power's benefit to, to put it under the state easement and run it into Portland. So I've already sent out emails. I contacted a woman named Connie Gemmer who's with Power Engineering. And she worked with us when the big Really Road project was going in. And she's not doing that work anymore, but she forwarded it, my email, to a couple of people at CMP. So that's how much I think this is a done deal. And I do, I've come around to your way of thinking that it's a good idea to have a seat at the table and maybe with some ideas to help relieve the tax burden for Cumberland.
I made a motion a couple of weeks ago to table this. And the reason I, I came up with the, the motion was that it, it, we needed more information. That's all, period. And I, I, it didn't go over well with the council. Okay, so let's put it that way. That's all I have.
I think our hands are tied here. We're in a situation where I, I think that we are, we, we have no choice. I have more questions tonight than I do the last time we met and talked about this. But I'm fairly confident that we're gonna get the answers. And without, without participating in this, this study, or whatever you want to call it, we are, we're, we will be disadvantaged. The, the concerns of the abutters are paramount here. The concerns of, of, you know, any number of people using this trail without bathroom facilities or ingress, egress. You know, all these things are questions that we need to know. The, the, the cost or the potential of, of what the town may be required to, you know, you know, are we, are we on the hook for twenty percent? Are we on the hook for maintenance, yearly maintenance? You know, all these things are unknowns. And, you know, we can't, we can't endorse this tonight, but we certainly need to make sure that we have a voice and frankly, two voices. And I'm confident that the town manager will be on that. And I'm confident that we're gonna get a seat as a council, one of the council members will be on there. And it's, we need, we need to do due diligence with this matter and I, I think that, you know, you know, it's, it's a wonderful idea. Let's have a bike trail or let's, let's provide access to Portland and, and and on the face of it, it's a great idea. But now I think we gotta dig and do our homework. And, and, you know, the, the homework is just beginning. And we need to make our voice heard loud and clear. What's the rest, do you think?
I, I am for voting to kind of pass the resolution as worded. To Mr. Sherman's point, I think it'd be great if it was three months ago or four months ago. But we are not in a position, timing wise, to do a separate due diligence and then be in a position to bring information forward. If so if we want to be part of the conversation and get the answers that I think we do deserve to get answers for and ensure that we are, we are part of the process. Because my other concern, while, you know, you talked about the process, that at some point it would be brought to us if we're not part of the council. But is, it's too late, right? We all know that at that point they're just presenting what the plan is and kind of trying to dot some i's and cross some t's. So being part of it allows us to have some creative solutions and ensure that we are getting the most out of this as, as we can for our community. And also putting some red flags up sooner rather than later, too. So that, that is why at this point I am, I am for the resolution as it's, as it's worded. All three points in the resolution as worded.
I'm last.
I'm not in favor of this at all. This is a poor plan. It does nothing for the residents of Cumberland. There's no public access. We can't afford it. We, we were talking about residents with no water tonight. And yet here we are talking about spending, I don't know, depending, just doing the rough math, between five and eight hundred thousand right now on that with no public access to any part of that. Let alone, you know, I've mentioned it the last time. We have turned down project after project or proposal for projects all over this town based upon the abutters. And what is the objection we've heard every time we talked about the town garage, which benefits the whole town? Well, the noise and, and the congestion and this. Yet here we are, it's not just one part of it. It's a whole corridor is going to be affected by this, right in people's backyard. So I'm voting, I'm voting against it. I voted against it previous two times. And I'll vote it against it in the, in the future. Absolutely no support for this.
I'm gonna try to simplify this. I want to ask Mr. Woodbury or the gentleman to his right one question. If the Town of Cumberland is not a dance partner in this project, what will happen in the Town of Cumberland?
I, I, I'm not sure I can answer your question directly because I don't know. I, I wish I knew the answer to that on many of our trail building opportunities. I will say, I think there's some misunderstanding regarding how these trails get built in the state of Maine. Now, that may differ in other states because some states have taken vast resources. Maine has a little bit of money that we're all trying to share. It's not nearly enough. But it is there and we can grind through. And that's why the Eastern Trail has taken 20 years to build 24 miles. But the communities have built every foot of that trail. So Mr. Shane or whoever is sitting in that position when it's time to put it out to bid is working with Public Works, whomever does the bidding for the town. And even before on the engineering design, it is a municipal project. Whether you like it or not, there's nobody else to build the trail. So every foot, as I said, of trail that has been built has been controlled and managed by a municipality by default. There isn't anyone else. And I think that's a good thing because I think municipalities should be, have authority and should be responsible. It does create some burden to use your bidding process and however you would build a road or build a sidewalk or build a school. Same thing for this. There, there's no master builder, I wish there were, from the state who comes and builds trail. So maybe to answer your question a little more directly, if the town doesn't want trail, there won't be any. Plain and simple, because you have to build it. You get a lot of support. You'll get, you can get a lot of money potentially. There is the match I mentioned. That's very real, it's a real cost, totally get it. But that, that, that's how we are, that's what we're faced with in Maine when we build trails. I just wanted to be clear about that because I'm sensing that wasn't understood or I didn't explain it properly or anything. So thank you, I appreciate the follow-up.
So, so let me get this right. If the Town of Cumberland decides not to participate in this whole project, this trail will not exist.
I think that's totally incorrect.
That's what I'm thinking, too.
We don't own the land. The railroad owns the land, the state owns the land. I think it'll just go right by us.
And that's what I'm trying to get out of here, I guess. I guess I voted against this project to start because I didn't have enough information together. You've been great tonight. Both of you tonight have given us a lot more information. My fear is that if we don't participate, we're just gonna get this railroaded through, no pun intended, but it, that's what's gonna happen. If we don't participate, we're just gonna be a victim of circumstances. And that's what I'm fearful of. I feel for Shirley because she's a director butter. I live on West, in West Cumberland where the old inner urban railroad bed used to go through. And I put myself in the same shoes. They would be walking by my living room window 10 feet if that railroad bed still existed. And I wouldn't want that. So I feel for her and I feel for her sans nuance. I mean, it's a change of what you're used to doing your entire life. But I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot if we don't participate. I really do. I mean, and I'm not supporting this project, but I think, Mark, you've done a tremendous amount of work on this and I think you've done a good job. I mean, I think we, we owe it to ourselves and to the community to be a participant in this project. We're just, we're gonna get brainstormed if we don't, so. That's all I have.
I would just add to that and thank you for that. But you've also done a lot of work and research. And I think the changes here are because by not participate, I think we need to participate to make sure we are protecting abutters.
Exactly.
Not just to participate to say we want a trail in Cumberland, which I think is a wonderful idea. I think we need to protect the abutters and make sure that the, I mean, I'm just thinking about a council sitting there and saying, oh, well, this is where we'll put an on-ramp or this is where we'll have a, a, a stopping spot. If they're not from Cumberland or they don't know the property, they, we need a voice on that council that says, that's not the place to put it. You're actually gonna want to put it right here. And so I think we can do good work, making sure abutters are protected and also making sure that the folks of Cumberland, many of whom have spoken tonight, have the types of trails that, that they want to see in our town, so.
So the previous public hearing that we had, we had a number of people show up and most of them were abutters. And, and we heard a lot of concerns about their issues. And tonight we've heard from supporters. And anyways, I, I think that I'm, I'm pleased with everyone's comments. It is important. Anyways, Mike, you had something to say?
No, I'm good, Bob, thanks. Appreciate it.
Unless anyone has anything else to add, I will annotate a motion.
Give you a motion, Mr. Chairman. I move to adopt a resolution to create a rail corridor advisory council for the proposed Casco Bay and Royal River Trails and to appoint a Town of Cumberland official to serve on any such advisory council.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? I'll call for a vote, all in favor. Opposed. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you all for coming this evening.
They might be here for something else.
Maybe so. Anyways, I still thank you for coming.
I would just like to thank Mr. Woodbury and the gentleman to your right for coming. You've been very, very helpful tonight. So I mean, and, and hopefully that we'll get what we want. If we won't, Mr. Woodbury, we're coming looking for you, so.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item on the agenda. Twenty-one dash zero nine-two. To consider an act on forwarding to the planning board for a public hearing and recommendation a zone chain request for properly identified as map U-21 Lot Two from the Village Office Commercial One Zone VOC One to the Village Medium Density Residential Zone VMDDR, VMDR, as recommended by the ordinance committee. Shirley, Chair of the Ordinance Committee.
Turn it over to the manager. He's got the, he's got the pictures. I can help you out.
Sure. The, several months ago, it's probably been, probably close to six months ago, we had a, a request from the gentleman that lives here in this triangular piece along the Old Gray Road and Route 100 to rezone the property. The property is located in the VCC and the uses of the VCC are primarily commercial. We, we explained that in other zones in town, the first step would be to see if the DOT would actually even allow you an access point along this stretch of Route 100. He filed the request in your packet. You'll see the denial letter from DOT to even allow a driveway entrance in here for any commercial uses because of the access off of Old Gray Road. So we looked at this a little closer. And what he would like to do is basically divide his property so that he can create another residential lot. And the only way to effectively do that is to change the property from the current VOC One to the VMDR. And this triangle would basically fill that blue outline. So this would become the VMDR as well. He would be able to divide his lot and basically most likely create a residential property from that. And because the VMDR allows a more dense zone, the VOC One, which doesn't allow him to do this, it would work. So we brought this to the ordinance committee. The ordinance committee deliberated on it. And the next step in the process is for the council, there's, there's the DOT letter right here. It's kind of blurry, I apologize for that. But, and also we did a soil investigation to see if the property could sustain another unit, which he also paid for and did himself. And Mr. Banfield basically brought all this information to us and to the ordinance committee. And the ordinance committee said, well, the next step is to send it to the planning board for a recommendation and a hearing if the council chose to do so. This isn't the step to say yes or no. This is the step to say, is it worth sending it out for a public hearing? We have basically given just about anybody that's requested these the right to do the process. And then you would ultimately have the final say on it pending the recommendation from the planning board, which is obviously non-binding. It's, it's up to you. So tonight, the request is to send this property with your, with your endorsement to the planning board for consideration to change it from the current VOC One to the VMDR. I guess I said it was in the VCC. I guess it is in the VOC One. So the VOC One allows for a lot of things, but it doesn't allow for the two single-family homes on one lot. So that was the thing that kind of tripped us up all along. Because Shirley had asked that we kind of explore all the combinations if we can avoid this. But we just kind of hit the wall and couldn't, couldn't find any other solution. So that's why it's here before you tonight. And I think Mr. Banfield is still here. And you, you can ask him any question he has directly. He's been great to work with and a very patient man.
I think you'll find all the information that we had that, when we deliberated upon this, the single most compelling piece of information is that he would not be allowed another access onto Route 100, thereby making that property really not a viable VOC One property. And so he worked with Carla and Carla helped guide him through the steps of, you need to make sure that you could pass soils test and, you know, da, 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 da. The access for this property would be on the backside, not on Route 100, which is consistent with
Yeah, it would be on the old gray road side.
Right. Which is consistent with the other buildings in that area, their homes, single-family homes.
Shirley, what's, what's the consistency between the property you and I were involved with on
Shirley, what's, what's the consistency between the property you and I were involved with on Greeley Road, trying to get the owner to be able to build now a house, which only made sense, but we couldn't do it.
Right.
And now allowing this. I'd be interested in your perspective on that.
Yeah, it is totally the zoning, but we can't plop a VOC One in the middle of Greeley Road and all of that. I mean, this, this is abutting a VMDR already. We're not changing anything other than, you know, putting that, connecting that wedge to the currently existing VMDR, that it does allow for that density. But he still has two acre, I mean, each, each lot is.
It'd be a little over half an acre for each one.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Banfield, I assume?
Indeed, yes.
Would you like to address us?
James Banfield, living at 10 Old Gray Road.
And you're?
Basically, because of that hill that's on Route 100, there's no access, a commercial or even residential that could happen in that property location. So, the only access would be from Old Gray Road, and it just makes sense to keep that residential anyway, since that road, I'm assuming you guys don't want to pave that, and we have no interest to want to have that road paved. So, it's going to be a very low-use road anyway, so adding one extra house there wouldn't be a big deal.
Yeah, my first thoughts on this, and it sounds like a lot, other folks on the council have more information than I do, and just a lot more background, and I appreciate you waiting this entire time for this. So, is it my understanding that even if a commercial enterprise wanted to situate itself in a VOC One lot on Route 100 and Old Gray Road, they would be unable to do that?
In that spot.
In that specific spot.
That specific spot.
To get a driveway entrance permit from the DOT.
Gotcha.
They would always force them onto the Old Gray Road.
There's a large hill that's at the top of it, right at the, where the two roads come together.
I think I know that road, yep.
Because of that, there's no way any sort of entrance could be there.
Okay, so it almost sounds like that property is almost unusable for commercial purposes. Is that my understanding? I mean, maybe it could be, but it seems it makes more sense as a residential plot of land.
To me, yes.
The, can I speak? The property next to it, too, has apartments there, even, so even though it's not, it's not what I would consider commercial use, because there are a number of apartments right on that land adjacent to him in what's, in the VOC One gray part. So, residences are consistent, Emerald Drive is right there, yeah.
I know those apartments.
Right. Mr. Chairman, sir, how big is the entire lot?
Entire lot, it's about 1.3 acres.
And how long have you owned it?
Since 2007.
Seven?
Yep.
So, when you bought it, was it in the VOC One, or has it?
When I bought it, it was actually in the process of changing to, I will be honest, I don't remember what the zoning was at that time, but the Route 100 corridor was changing all of the zones at that time. So, when I bought it, it was right before they changed, and then it got changed.
I guess what a little bit concerns me is a zone change to create another lot. I mean, that's what it, and maybe it will pass a straight face test, I don't know. But it looks to me like you're trying to create another house lot so that you've got a viable lot to sell if we change the zoning.
That's exactly.
If you leave it alone, you can't do anything but a single-family home on the entire lot.
Yeah, ideally, I'd like to expand where my house, what my house is right now, but because it's up in that corner, we can't add a room on any side of it, because it's too close to Route 100, because the house was built in 1920, and all the roads were certainly much smaller at that point. So, that's why I'd like to split it. Ideally, I'd actually like to rent my current house and build a new house for myself there.
The problem I have is a zone change to create a lot, that's the problem. It doesn't pass a straight face test with me, because I'm down in the VCC at the intersection, and my land is more valuable being residential than it is commercial, but there's no way in God's name that you guys would let me change my zoning.
There's no commercial space that can go there, that's the only problem. So, it can't be any other use, other than residential.
But it can remain residential, which it's been for 100 years, I mean. So, I mean, I know the gentleman that used to live there back when I was a little kid.
But it's sort of grandfathered into a residential use because it's, it was residential.
And that's why I asked him, you know, when he bought it, if it was before the zone change, or during, or after, or whatever, which by the sounds, it was before the zone change.
It was right in the window, I can't remember.
And I know, I know the land extremely well, I mean, I grew up right there, and I mean, and I know you've, God, you take your life in your own hands if you tried to pull out on the Route 100. It's bad enough to try to get out of Old Gray Road right there, so the problem that I have is, by us changing it, you're benefiting because you're creating another lot that's probably worth in this neighborhood. Who knows what a house lot's worth, I mean, and rightly so. You own the land, you've made a legitimate request, but I just don't want 20 other people coming in here saying, you did it for this guy, why don't you do it for me? You have a unique situation because of your configuration in your land, so.
I think if you look at the email trail here, one of the comments that Kyle made, and I think you raised a legitimate question here on, you know, is that she says that this is, you know, an opportune time to profit by the sale of a lot. I think that, you know, this was the ordinance committee that Shirley and I, when we met here last Thursday, we did not consider precedent-setting, and I think that's a reasonable question. Are we setting precedents by change, changing this lot here? And I guess I'll throw this out to the town manager. Is this a question that we should obtain an opinion from the town attorney on?
You could, you could. I would say the VMDR zone allows a smaller density, and that's why the change is requested. It gets it down to a 20,000-acre lot instead of a 40,000-square-foot lot. 20,000-square-foot lot versus a 40,000-square-foot lot that's required in the VOC One. And remember, it's the access that's prohibited by DOT, not the use. So, the use would still be allowed on the lot, but it would have to access off basically a residential neighborhood.
Right, right. Shirley?
Well, our job tonight is to send this to the planning board for their thoughts. And we're not approving it or disproving it tonight, so.
Then we can still obtain an opinion from the town attorney?
Yes.
And I, Mr. Chairman, I have no problem sending it to the planning board, and I know there's a hardship to create this into a commercial lot, don't get me wrong. The timeline is what's kind of got the wrench in the works. So, I mean, I'm fair to listen to the planning board and see what they have to say, so.
Is this lot on public water?
Just, no, it's just below him.
Just misses it.
It's literally, it's at the end of Emerald Way, and there's a fire hater almost at the base of my land.
You probably could.
It's not quite at the.
Do you intend to access public water?
Ideally, I'd love to, whether the logistics happen, I'd have to get an easement from Andy, the guy next door, in order to access it, though.
Okay.
We'd have to extend the main halfway across his property frontage. That's how, he couldn't do it through the abutting property. So, if you request a main extension, it has to.
You're unplugged.
Peaceful.
Okay. I think we have a path forward. We can get questions answered that we need from the town attorney.
We've talked tonight about people's homes being close to the highway. This gentleman is about as close as it gets.
I know.
It certainly feels like it.
Sure that Yarmouth Lumber rattles his windows quite often, so, I mean, but no.
Since it was repaved, it's much better, I'll say that.
I have no problem with sending it to the planning board and listening to their recommendations, so.
All right, so, I'll take a motion then.
I'll give it to you. I move to forward to the planning board for public hearing and recommendation a zone change request for property identified as map U-21 Lot Two from the Village Office Commercial One Zone VOC One to the Village Medium Density Residential Zone as recommended by the ordinance committee.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? See none, all in favor. In unanimous, thank you.
Thank you much.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
Next item, twenty-one dash zero nine three. To hold a public hearing to consider an act on amendments to Chapter 48 Coastal Waters, Section 2-D definitions of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the ordinance committee.
I could handle this one.
Uh-huh, well, I don't know, you couldn't get to ask one. I'll let you have this one, Ben.
Do you want to open and close the public hearing, since there's no one here?
No, I want you to make a presentation, and then I'll decide whether to do that.
Well, our presentation is, we got this from the Coastal Waters Committee, and if you look through your packet, you'll see that really all, these are just.
Fees and fines.
Fees, fees to fines and fines to fees, and just, you know, it's a wording, housekeeping issue. I think in this one, there's only one.
No, no, there was, I think there was three.
No, in the next one, there's more.
Yeah.
In moorings, there's more.
Yeah, okay.
So, you have six pages of.
And it's on the last page.
Reading, and it's on the last page where it moves from fees to fines, or fines to fees. Fee to fine.
Do we know why there was a change in wording?
Our wordsmith are on coastal waters, Mr. Mike Schwinn.
Since there is no members of the public.
I'll just say, I think it makes more sense when you put it in connection with the next one, which is very much distincting, like which are fees versus what is a penalty fine.
A fine is really a penalty, yes, and could involve some enforcement.
Understood.
Thanks for helping out on that, Allison.
For the record, the public hearing was offered, there was no members of the public here, so the public hearing was closed. Would you like to make a motion again?
Sure. I move to amend Chapter 48 Coastal Waters, Section 2D definitions of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the ordinance committee.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? In unanimous. Item twenty-one dash zero nine four. To hold a public hearing to consider an act on amendments to Chapter 84 Fees and Fines, Section 12 moorings of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the ordinance committee.
So, we considered this one briefly, because it's pretty obvious. A mooring charge is a fee, and a penalty is a fine, so the language reflects that. A resident mooring fee and a dinghy dockage time limit fine. And violations are fines.
And again, for the record, the public hearing was offered, no members of the public were present. Public hearing is closed, a motion is asked for.
Wait, hold on, there's this one, I think "I" is also supposed to be changed to a fine, it still says "fee."
Which one?
"I."
"I."
Violation of Section 48.
Violation would be, yes, that would be a fine.
So, that was my only.
Good grab.
Did my pre-work this week, everyone.
Well, you were waiting for that, weren't you?
I was.
Well, you got the big money. Sheer in the money tonight.
So, maybe as part of a motion, we want a caveat.
amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Yep. Allison maybe might want to do that one.
Okay, got it. I move to amend Chapter 84 Fees and Fines, Section 12 moorings of the Cumberland Code as recommended with amendment to item "I" by the ordinance committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? In unanimous. Okay, twenty-one dash zero nine five. To hold a public hearing to consider an act on amendments to Chapter 9 Alarm Systems of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the ordinance committee. One more time, Shirley.
We've been busy, so I'm not going to recapture all of this under new business, you've got it now. This has been a while in coming to us. I had a citizen approach us probably a year and a half, two years ago, who has a, an alarm system at his home. And he said, why do I have to register it? And I tried to, you know, explain that, well, in case you have a false alarm, we need your information. It didn't, when we started considering all the ways people now alarm their homes with iHomes and all of the other technology out there, it doesn't make sense to break off one group that might have a professionally-installed system as opposed to someone who has a self-installed home system. So, we've worked on this for a number of years, we put it together. There is no longer a fee to register your home alarm system. However, this draft does highlight, in case of false alarms, after so many false alarms within a designated time period, you could be facing some penalties. And that's only fair, a fair use and expectation if you're calling out public services for an emergency that doesn't exist. We expect you to participate. So, that's what this ordinance is, if, I hope you read it.
I did.
As your homework.
And I know we all did. We all come prepared to the meeting.
Any questions about it?
None. All right, would you like to put that into motion then?
All right. I move to amend Chapter 9 Alarm Systems of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the ordinance committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? See none, all in favor? In unanimous. All right, twenty-one dash zero nine six. To consider an act on setting October 11th through 15th as bulky item pickup.
So moved.
So moved. Seconded. Everybody, check your town website for what's approved to be picked up and what's not approved. And there is a special day for electronics that can be dropped off. And there is a shredding event, those who have some documents they want to shred. That's on October 2nd. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? In unanimous, thank you. And that wraps up our official business for the evening. Thank you, everyone, for the effort tonight. Comments?
New business.
And so, new business. Town Council Work Plan Updates. I think we all enjoyed a discussion this evening with Avesta Housing before the meeting. That was very informative for those in the public who might want to know what the town is doing. We are doing some exploratory work on a assisted-living nursing care facility, and we had a meeting with Avesta Housing that we get some steps forward to take from here, and some people to talk with the state level, and we will bring that topic up again soon. So, Mark, I know you're on the committee. So, um, Mark, uh, I know you're on the committee and you may have some new business to share with us also.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In terms of new business, I wanted to highlight two issues. One being, um, the senior property tax assistance or relief programs that we are working on. As most folks know, we have a very robust, uh, senior property tax rebate program. We are looking at ways to potentially expand or grow that program where we can and where it's feasible economically and just practically. We're also looking at other creative solutions, I'll put it that way, to make it easier for folks who have lived in Cumberland for quite some time, who are, um, perhaps older in age and lower on the income scale to also benefit further from additional assistance in the property tax area. So, um, we, we're still working through some of those details, um, but we're, we're moving along in that area. We had a really productive, uh, meeting prior to the town council meeting tonight. And then on the, um, open for business, um, side of things, which is the, the initiative to kind of identify, um, areas in Cumberland that are currently zoned for business and to also try to identify potential businesses that would like to move in. And also to highlight the, the wonderful businesses that we currently have in Cumberland. We've started updating the business directory, we just got that information, trying to identify how many businesses we have, where they are located, whether they have websites, how they can be reached, whether they are physical structures that would be separate from someone's home or whether it's a business in the new economy that might be located in someone's home. So we've got that list together, I'm working with, uh, Councillor Kopp, um, as well, and that initiative as well with the town manager. We've got some work to do, I think the next step there is for us to schedule a meeting with, uh, the town manager to walk through some of that data to figure out how best to sort it, so.
Great, thank you. Shirley?
Okay, I have an update from the ordinance committee in addition to the four items we brought forth tonight. We spent some time, a few weeks ago, talking with the Cumberland Farmers Club and a land-odding, a landowner nearby who also runs a business on, uh, Bruce Hill Road. And we, we had some discussions about land use and, um, protecting one another and helping each stay in business. I don't anticipate anything coming forth right away. I mean, if we end up with some problems down the road, um, we may see something come toward us, but right now, we're trying to work out differences on a neighbor-to-neighbor type, um, approach. We spent most of an hour and a half, two hours last week, meeting with an attorney. She was a former student, I'm going to keep her name, um, out of the discussion, but, um, she actually is an attorney for the marijuana industry. She's an attorney at Drummond Woodson. And she had so much information to share about our ordinance, so we are working hard at that. Our next step is, um, just try to craft something, um, run it by her. She, she's willing to share some information that she has from working with other communities and work again with Natalie, our own town attorney, and see what she has to say about it. The most ironic thing I found in that whole conversation is totally opposite of what you might expect. We have over 30 medical marijuana, um, caregivers in our community and they are all over town. And medical marijuana is unregulated. It could have lead in it, it could have arsenic or pesticides in it, and it's totally unregulated. Whereas adult use, formerly known as retail marijuana, is heavily regulated. So, um, there was some discussion, Bob was part of this, why are we spending so much time on this? If this is going to be something you can eventually get at the pharmacy or at, we don't have package stores here. Massachusetts has package stores where you buy your alcohol, but you might get your marijuana at a package store and that would be...
We don't have any of your state liquor stores anymore?
I don't know, I don't. In any event, um, we learned a lot and we'll have, um, we'll have a lot more on this coming forward. And then, um, the most exciting news, I forgot to bring your party hats, but Saturday is the birthday party for the town of Cumberland and I hope you'll all be there at Twinbrooks. There are some amazing activities planned for the day. Several of our counselors, our manager are gonna make an appearance in a dunk tank, so you might be able to sink them. There's a juggler, there's free cotton candy sponsored by the bicentennial committee. There's just, oh, there's an antique car show being sponsored and encouraged by Kopp Motors. There's just a lot going on on Saturday. The evening will end with a few words by Councillor Vale and myself and fireworks. We'll keep, we promise to keep those comments very short. So please come out to, uh, I had planned to bring party hats and, and whistles for you tonight and I just didn't get to it. And then, uh, I just want to, I, I mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting, but I just want to share condolences to the entire family and friend network of Phil Chase. He was an iconic community member, um, former fire chief, an incredible civil servant. What a lot of people don't know about him is his mother had to collect his diploma because he had already left, to enlist in the service, uh, when he graduated from high school. An amazingly hardworking man, I mean, I think after he had retired five or six or seven times, he still went to work for Story Brothers driving a dump truck. And he had to have been 110 by then. I mean, he only lived 94 years, but I think he packed a couple of hundred years' worth of life in those years. So, he will be missed. That's all I have.
The food pantry numbers are down, which is a good thing. So, um, I, I'm, I'm kind of happy about that, but then on the other side, kind of wondering what's going on, so. I don't know, Bill, if you wanted to add anything to that? Okay. Does anybody know what they're building at the mobile, by the mobile station, across from the mobile station over in Yarmouth?
Parkinawhat for the rail trail.
No, they, they're actually building condos.
Is that what they're building?
Seriously condos, right across the street.
That little, that little piece of property?
Yep, yep.
Nuts.
Yep, I mean, that's all I have.
I'm gonna talk real fast. One thing, I know we have on new business, the finance committee meeting and, um, Councillor Gruber mentioned it kind of after, kind of had, had the conversation under manager's report, so just kind of formally asking, I'm seeing ARP funds, end of year, first quarter financial review, just that we add the public water to that meeting's agenda in October. I know we, date's TBD, but I know we want it to be sooner rather than later. The other one is, um, as you guys know, I am an avid biker, now that I can't run. And so, I've been over by Yarmouth and that Greeley Road railroad track, we, there's no shoulder. So we need that sign that says bikes may use the full lane. Because there's no, there is no way a bike and a car getting through there, which in theory should then be a no-brainer that the car may yield as the biker should take the full lane with looking. But just, I know Yarmouth has the sign at that same place where there's no shoulder. I think on Tuttle, there's enough room, but just the Greeley Road one.
There, there is 13 feet, but you're right.
Yeah.
When people are trying to negotiate the curb and, and the side, it's kind of, kind of dicey.
Yep, yep. And then, the, the comment was made to under, um, it might have been the same, or maybe it was under, um, item 21-090, around the speed limits, and I actually noticed it today, that we, we have the 35 mile per hour speed limit if you're heading towards Main Street on Greeley Road, at the Doughty, like she mentioned. And then there's the 25 mile per hour so, sign if you're coming from Main Street on Greeley. But the sign is alluding, and I don't know, last time I took my driver's ed, is more alluding to the fact that it's 25 miles per hour when you turn right onto Valhalla. But that, that is very confusing signage of if it's 25 miles per hour or is it a 35 mile per hour zone on that stretch from Main Street to really Doughty. I don't know what the intent of that signage is and I don't even know if that's our road or DOT, but...
It's our road.
Okay.
And I, I've got it on my list after she mentioned it to, to look at that.
Just a couple of things for the bicentennial. Yours truly will be in the dunk tank from 11 to 12, so if you would like to choose accordingly, um, I'll be there. But actually during that time, um, one, um, of the events that is, as you guys know, I've mentioned these events a few times since earlier this year, are around the smashing the stigma around mental illness in our community. And so, at 11:30, we will be planting the Cumberland Hope Garden as part of that event. I'm actually meeting with Ted tomorrow to, to really formally pick the best spot, but it will be at 11:30. And really, that is the, the impetus, the kickoff of planting hope in our community. September is suicide prevention month, so it is really wonderful timing. Um, and Tig and Emily were gracious to give us this time slot in their agenda and so I do hope folks join us at 11:30. We'll confirm location after tomorrow to, to plant a bulb, be part of planting the hope in our community. And then in May, we'll come back together and, and see the blooming and the growth of, of hope in our community together as well, so.
It's a great idea.
Thank you Yellow Tulip Project, because we stole it from them.
Just two things I want to say, how much I really appreciate the discussion tonight. I ended up on the losing side of the vote, which is, hey, whatever, um, but it was good, respectful community and discussion. I, I really enjoyed the input from everybody. Finally, I just, uh, condolences to the Gagden family. Mark Gagden, uh, he graduated high school, I mean, he lived on Middle Road, the, where the daycare is, uh, right next to Main Line Fence, passed away, uh, way too young. So condolences to his family, he's still got deep roots in this community, uh, thoughts are with him, so.
Ronnie?
Three or four things. If Allison or I have offended you, we'll be in the duck tank on, uh, Saturday. I won't tell you what time I'll be there.
When Allison and I offended you, will we?
Just look for us, I won't tell you what time.
Oh, you guys are braver than I am.
One thing I'd like to thank the town manager for the striping on Mill Road, and I think I'm in the minority, but I do think it has slowed traffic down. I think it's wonderful. My grandkids go out there and ride their bicycles on Mill Road. And it is, from what I can see, people have, are a little bit more aware and they've slowed down on it. So I think it was a great asset. Condolences to the Phil Chase family. Phil was a reserve officer when I was a young fella and I can remember him, Bob Caneal, Dennis Allen, my father, there are a bunch of them that were all reserve officers and Phil was a true icon in this community. Shirley, you hit it right on the head, he, I just would not retire. I mean, I'd never forget Story Brothers Dump Truck, just a few years going by and there's Phil Chase driving it. He must have been 90 or 91 years old when he was driving the dump truck. I said, "The guy's never gonna quit," but I think that's what kept him going. I have $20 here from my good friend Dean for the food pantry, which will take place Tuesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday at the Cumberland Fair. It's always been a huge success, probably still will be. I have one comment on the railroad crossing right out here on Tuttle Road and it's nothing to do with the town. I came up through there Saturday night hauling a rubbish truck behind one of my big wreckers and the arm does not go straight up at 90 degrees, it actually is tilted like this. And I literally had to be very careful when I came through there, so my gut feeling is the first trailer truck that comes through there is going to clean the, the arm out.
The arm of the gate?
The arm of the gate. If you look at it, Bill, when you pull out, it is not truly vertical when it's in the up position.
So coming up Tuttle Road?
Coming up Tuttle Road towards the center. If you're in the westbound lane, it's actually very tight to get through there because it's not perfectly at a 90-degree angle because it's more of like a 70-degree or a 75-degree angle and I'm afraid somebody's going to clean it out. I think that is all I have. And I do look forward to the Saturday get-together down there. I hope it's a huge success, hopefully we have some good weather and, uh, hopefully it's not too cold.
You can borrow my wet suit, Ron.
You're not wearing a wet suit.
I'm gonna borrow Mike Speedo.
Now you ruined it, you really ruined it.
Maybe nobody will show up.
He will be throwing his balls at me.
Tom?
Bill, maybe you can answer this. Where is the parking gonna be for the bicentennial?
Well, there will be parking at, at Twinbrook, but also there'll be shuttle parking if we have overflow conditions, uh, from the school.
I gotta tell you, that, that, that parking that we had for the, uh, lacrosse was, was terrific. It was, it was, it was well done.
The Labor Day soccer tournament you talked about?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they do a nice job.
They do.
For the folks that, uh, run, walk or whatever from the beach to the bacon.
Can't call that anymore.
That's not...
We're trotting Tuttle now.
Trotting Tuttle. Will there be a bus service to go back down and get a car or get...
You're supposed to park at Twinbrooks and then the shuttle is to guide you to the start.
Okay, all right.
There will still be bacon served.
All right.
Bacon served.
If you run from the beach.
You run to the beach. All right, well, thank you very much and, uh, I appreciate the efforts on the committee work. Look forward to, uh, seeing how we do next meeting.
Make a adjourn, a, uh, motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second, all in favor? We stand adjourned.